All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And FYI, we have a public hearing, the first part of this, to discuss some water stuff and information that they're going to bring before us. We have any comments at this point in time from the public? Going once, twice? All right. If you want to go ahead and get started, that's fine by us. We're going to try to knock all this out in the first part of this meeting.
I don't want to do it.
Yeah. So I'll go ahead and introduce you all. This is Ryan Bowman with Friday Eldridge and Clark. He's here to answer any questions that any of y'all may have. And then Cheryl Fluterman with Raymond James is here. She'll be here to answer any questions as far as the bond stuff goes and all that. So does any of our council members have any questions of them?
We've done this before. As Mayor mentioned, Ryan Bowman, Friday Eldridge and Clark. For you, the wrong accounts back in 2022, you did a very similar financing for your water and sewer system. That was for water improvements. This time it's for sewer improvements. We're authorized up to $7.5 million. That line, as I said, will also be purchased by Simmons Bank, just as it was back in 2022. There are two ordinances in your agenda packet tonight for the meeting. The first simply confirms your existing water and sewer rates. So if a resident sees this ordinance published in the paper, be rest assured that it does not raise your rates. It does not, I'll repeat, raise your rates. It just confirms the existing water and sewer rates that are charged to the customers of your water and sewer system. The second ordinance, as I mentioned, authorizes $7.5 million to be secured by your water and sewer revenues to finance sewer improvements here in the city. That bond will be purchased by Simmons Bank. It bears interest at 4.29% and matures on October 15th of 2037. So very quick summary. As the mayor mentioned, Cheryl Fluterman from Raymond James is here to answer any questions related to the financial side of the transaction. I'm here certainly answering any questions on the legal side or any questions with respect to the ordinance as of for you tonight. So thank you again for the opportunity to work with you and have to answer questions that you might have.
Any questions of either of these? And I think that we are going to kind of go out of order. So we probably need to amend our agenda to go ahead and knock this out, the ordinance aspect of it, while they're still here, in case anything comes up and they need to answer some questions.
I would go ahead and roll call on all of that.
Okay. Okay. So let's talk about ordinance 2025-8, issuance of water and sewer revenue bond.
Well, there's something that would have a requirement or third roll call.
But we're still getting a vote.
Okay, all right, I got you. I got you. Go ahead, Carmen.
Stephen Ford.
Here.
Brad Willis.
Here.
Leslie Evans.
Here.
Crystal Lacy.
Here.
Roger O.
Here.
Scott Thomas.
Here.
Guy Roden.
Here.
Fatina Komen.
I thought you meant both.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Roll call. Good. I got you.
And Mayor, as far as the ordinance is concerned, if we could do the ordinance confirming your existing water and sewer rates first, and then we'll tackle the ordinance on the bond, please.
Any opposition to that? Okay. So I'll need a motion?
So you said about doing the rate, rate one first?
Yes, sir, please. And I'm happy to read the ordinance in full. I know when I've been here in the past, we have voted to suspend the rules, place the ordinance on first reading by title only, and then the same procedure for second reading, the third reading, and to adopt. Again, I would have to read it with full preference.
It's definitely not.
Sometimes things change. Of course, after years.
They're all way up here for that.
I know. I really wanted to read it before you. You said.
Mr. Mayor, then I'm moved to put the water and sewer rate sheet on ordinance on its first reading.
Have a motion?
Sir.
Have a second by Mr. Ford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
This is an ordinance confirming rates of services written by the Water and Sewer System in the city of Arkansas. So I'm driving the matter by later today.
Okay. And the first reading on that tonight, so. Actually, we're going to move forward with the adoption of the ordinance. So we can entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Have a motion? Have a second by Steve again? Go ahead.
It has to be adopted.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I get a little bit of myself. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
And ordinance confirming rates of services written by the Water and Sewer System in the city of Arkansas. So I'm driving the matter by later today. And entertain a motion to suspend the rule, place the ordinance on third reading.
I'll move to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on third reading by title only, then.
Second. Have a second by Mr. O. Roll call on this one.
Stephen Ford.
Yes.
Brad Willis.
Yes.
Leslie Evans.
Yes.
Crystal Lacy.
Yes.
Roger O.
Yes.
Scott Thomas.
Yes.
Guy Roden.
Yes.
Fatina Komen.
Yes.
All in favor.
This is an ordinance confirming rates of services written by the Water and Sewer System in the city of Arkansas. So I'm driving the matter by later today. And Mayor, if we have a motion to adopt.
Okay. I move we adopt the ordinance concerning water and sewer rates.
Have a motion?
Second.
You get that, Carmen? All right. All those in favor say aye. This is a roll call. Okay, all right. Roll call again, Carmen, please.
Stephen Ford.
Yes.
Brad Willis.
Yes.
Leslie Evans.
Yes.
Crystal Lacy.
Yes.
Roger O.
Yes.
Scott Thomas.
Yes.
Guy Roden.
Yes.
Fatina Komen.
All in favor.
And this is the ordinance number 2025-.
Uh, nine.
09 or 9.
Just nine.
Let's get the emergency on that, too. Do we need the emergency clause on that?
There's not an emergency clause. The red one is still there. There is on the bond.
Okay.
Get happy to answer your questions with respect to the issuance of the bond. And Cheryl Fluterman is here answering questions related to the financial aspect of the bond issue. But a very similar transaction to what you did back in 2022 to do against your solely about revenues of your water and sewer system. If the city wants to pay off this bond early, you can do that on and after October 15th of 2027 without.
Okay. I move we place the water and sewer revenue bond ordinance on its first reading by title only.
You got a motion?
Second.
Got a second by Steve? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of the water and sewer rate bond, providing the payment in the principal of an issue on the bond, driving the matter by later today and declaring an emergency. Motion to suspend the rules, place the ordinance on second reading.
I will move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance on second reading by title only, then.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second by Crystal Lacy? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
And ordinance authorizing the issuance of the water and sewer rate bond, providing the payment in the principal of an issue on the bond, driving the matter by later today and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I move we suspend the rules and put the water and sewer revenue bond to ordinance on third reading by title only.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second by Crystal Lacy? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
And ordinance authorizing the issuance of the water and sewer rate bond, providing the payment in the principal of an issue on the bond, driving the matter by later today and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I move we suspend the rules and put the water and sewer revenue bond to ordinance on third reading by title only.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second by Crystal Lacy? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
And ordinance authorizing the issuance of the water and sewer rate bond, providing the payment in the principal of an issue on the bond, driving the matter by later today and declaring an emergency.
Discussion.
I'll make the motion for the adoption of ordinance 2025-8.
Have a second. Motion, second by Guy? All those in favor? No, I'm sorry. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Stephen Ford.
Yes.
Brad Willis.
Yes.
Leslie Evans.
Yes.
Crystal Lacy.
Yes.
Roger O.
Yes.
Scott Thomas.
Yes.
Guy Roden.
Yes.
Fatina Komen.
All in favor.
Mayor, there is an emergency clause in section 29. Would ask for a separate motion to adopt the emergency clause, please.
Okay. I'll be accepting emergency clause on the ordinance.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second by Steve? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
If we could, if we could get a roll call.
Roll call vote on that.
Stephen Ford.
Yes.
Brad Willis.
Yes.
Leslie Evans.
Yes.
Crystal Lacy.
Yes.
Roger O.
Yes.
Scott Thomas.
Yes.
Guy Roden.
Yes.
Fatina Komen.
All in favor.
We will get the ordinance published, and we will close on the transaction on November 25th. So that's when the city will have funds for sewer improvements. Thank you again for the opportunity to work with the city.
Said November the 25th?
November 25th, yes, sir.
Well, thank you both for showing up, and hopefully that wasn't that painful for you all. We appreciate it. Absolutely appreciate it. Y'all are more than welcome to stick around, too. We've got a lot to talk about tonight. Or you can head back, whatever your pleasure is, so.
Mayor, clarify, second ordinance 25-.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to a regular meeting. Pledge of allegiance given by Councilor O and invocation given by Councilor Thomas. You would, please?
Father, we're thankful again for this day that you've given us and our time to gather and talk about community business. Lord, we pray, Lord, that you just give us wisdom during the other decisions that need to be made tonight and give us safety and travel. We call that remade. We pray for this to christenate. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I would make an amendment change to that to cover 13E and F and move those to prior to the invocation.
Okay. I'll second. You have a motion? Have a second? All right. Oh, you got it, you got it, you got it first. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll make the changes. All right. We've already done all that. Introduction of special guest. So we've got a lot of people here tonight, so we'll just kind of go around the room. Maria McSperrits here. If you'd like to stand up and say something real quick.
My name is Maria McSperrits. You know, maybe I'm not somebody else. I'm ready to give my pledge, but my name is retired. And so I have 15 years in the legal profession in the state of Arkansas. I've all been in juvenile court. I represent any parents, students, and all of their children and foster care. And currently, I work as a pre-prosecutor. I'm an attorney in Washington and Madison County that opens a case called Bens. Then we need the services where I filed a civil case and tried to teach children an hour of foster care and hour of repleasancy by putting services in the home free and private. It's my passion, it's what I've done, like I said, just to remember the title. And I knew that I pitched, and so trying to get my name out there for people to recognize me. Can anybody ask all of you a few questions?
Thank you. And then introduce, for most of y'all know, Sheriff Boyd and his wife Katie are in the audience today. Y'all need to say anything? Want to get up and say anything?
Officer Ryan Boyd, Sheriff Ian, Mr. City. Anybody has a question for me?
Thank you. We have Austin Boatright, and I'm not going in any particular order here. We've got Austin Boatright, who is the county clerk. He's going to be here, hopefully, to help us answer some questions that y'all may have. We're going to go extensively over our budget with the court and what's been proposed or what we're going to propose tonight with resolution. And then Ms. Amanda Born, who is the interim?
Treasurer.
Treasurer, correct? Okay. She's here to help us answer those questions as well, so we appreciate that. Mr. Prestley's here. We're going to bring up a topic of conversation. Man, it hits, just keep on coming. Got one of our JP's, Court Riley, back there, and Greg Wheeler in the back. Of course, Jennifer. We might as well just go right through. And my wife in the back. So, yes. All right.
They'll be pretty happy to hear.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead, since we have an approval of the minutes from September the 8th. We got that, okay, all right. Public comments.
I don't know. I'll send a beat.
Send. Oh, yeah, I almost forgot. Our very special guest, Mark Gates. If you would come up, we'll administer the oath of office for you as a planning commissioner. So if you would come on up, this is Mark O, our new.
Your relation uncle Bill, trust me.
Please raise your hand. I'm Mark Gates, DuSolem's juror, firm.
Hi, Mark Gates, DuSolem's juror and firm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Arkansas.
And Constitution of the state of Arkansas.
And I will discharge the duties of planning commissioner.
I would discharge the duties of the planning commissioner.
Position one.
Position one.
Of the city of Huntsville.
Of the city of Huntsville.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon, about, now I'm about to enter.
That'll work.
That'll work.
Congratulations, Mark. We appreciate it.
Thank you, officer. We appreciate it, Mark.
And you can have this copy for yourself.
Oh, great.
Thank you. Thank you. You could just tell me which way I need to go now. Now I'll make a motion for the approval of minutes submitted for September the 8th. All right. Approval of minutes. Second. Second by Ms. Evans. Carmen, did you get that?
Roden.
No.
Roden? No. O.
O.
And Evans.
He was looking at her.
O and Evans. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Public comments. We've already kind of covered all that, but I'll let anybody at this point in time get up and say whatever they feel like they need to. Okay. Hearing no takers, we'll move on to our city department reports. This was, a lot of these reports were provided in email agenda packet, emailed agenda packet. We'll start with Chief Herring. What do you got for us, chief?
Okay, for the police department, we had our highest rate of calls, 911 calls and complaints in like a year and a half. We had 250 calls in the month of September. We opened 21 cases and closed 20 of those cases in the month of September. And our CID officer had eight major cases that he opened and had closed seven. So the CID officer is working a tail off, trying to get stuff taken care of. Speaking of working tails off, our animal control officer, this month or last month, he had 28 animals that he had picked up. Seven of the dogs, picked up seven of the dogs. One was adopted out, was actually adopted out. Two were returned to the owner, and then four of them were currently in the shelter as of October 1st. I don't think they're all four injured now, but as of October 1st, they were still in there. And those numbers aren't necessarily all of the dogs that get picked up, because that gets taken care of on the scene. You know, when they, you know, a neighbor comes down, so much to eat, dog. Then we go talk to Jim, and they never make it back to the shelter. So those 20 animals that got picked, our 20 animals, there's way more than that. That's actually getting dealt with. They're just not making it back to the shelter. Officer Pearson also made a somewhat of an agreement with War to get like the broken bags of dog food that they can sell, and they're going to donate it to the pet shelter, or at a city pet shelter. So that kind of offsets the cost on the dog food for the pet shelter. And also, the city Huntsville Animal Control Page, he does a very good job of giving dogs on there for the people to be able to see that they're, you know, most people are gone at work, so they don't realize that their dog has actually gotten loose or had gotten out. So him for that, he just needs us. It really helps with them to be able to know where their dog is and come and get it before it becomes an issue. It's one of the things I wanted to talk about. We had a incident in one of the banks where one of the ATM machines had got broke into. And it's a new thing that they're calling, they're calling it jackpotting. So basically, what they're doing is they're having people come in and they're opening those ATM machines, and they can either stop the alarm from sounding, or they just shut the lid back down, but the ATM machine's still unlocked. And then when you go and check it, the officer gets called out or whenever they go, they look, the ATM machine looks like there's nothing wrong with it. So it becomes what they consider a false alarm. Well, then later, somebody else will come back through with a phone drive that has a virus or a Trojan in it, and they can put that in the ATM machine, and then the ATM machine dispenses all the money out of that ATM, and then they drive off with it. So we actually had that incident that happened. Luckily, my night shift officer, he was actually out patrolling, and when the alarm went off, he went straight to the ATM machine. Of course, again, it looked like there was nothing wrong with it, but apparently, because he was sitting there, the second group of people didn't come through and actually put the virus on the ATM machine. So that stopped it from happening as far as the theft part of it. But we did find out of Robert Smith had contacted some other departments in Northwest Arkansas and found out that it was happening in Fayetteville, Spandau, Rogers. They were all getting these ATMs hit. And we actually got a tag number and the guy's face and the clothes that he was wearing, and sent it to Rogers PD, and Rogers PD actually went in and saw it. It's crazy that these guys that we talked to, they're basically saying that they're just getting contacted online to go and unlock these ATM machines and then leave, and that's it. And then they get paid later. So they have no clue, supposedly no clue what they're actually doing, what they do it. But it didn't happen here, no games. Yeah, it was a good, it was a good, a good thing for us that there was no money that actually got taken out of the machine. So just wanted to let you guys know that. Something very exciting for us is the school board actually passed to hire a third SRO for the city and for the school. I wanted to thank especially the school board, Bailey Cotton, Matt Ferguson, and the superintendent JD Chalk for seeing the benefit of having SROs in the schools and the needed relationships that develops between law enforcement and the students, the faculty in the schools. We have a real working relationship with the district, and I look forward to that program in the future, because it looks like we have to get things coming down the pipe for that SRO program. And I'm sure the mayor will have more on that.
Yeah.
Contracts.
I'll give you all some finances on that later.
So we had our monthly SRT training and firearms training for September. Typically, our SRT training we do every month. Our firearms, we do it every quarter, quarter, we try to do it every quarter. And then we sort of qualify to also state qualifications. Our officers visited the learning center of North Arkansas. We showed them a couple of our patrol units, and we read, our red officers read Clifford the Bear adopted him, and then gave us some bill of the bears that we had donated. So they enjoyed that. They thought that was fun. Everybody heard about our K9 fundraiser that we had at Granny's Kitchen. It was very busy. I know a lot of you guys came down today, got to visit and talk to a lot of the people in our community, plus people outside of our community that were just passing through and bought the eggs soft and ate at Granny's, and had some very funny conversations with them. One of the guys asked me, asked him if he understood what was going on, and he said, you know, I really just thought that you guys were very serious about your open carry laws in Huntsville. Because there were so many people walking around with guns at Granny's Kitchen. So that was pretty comical. And he was all about it, though. He was, he was ready. And I also had some lady said, I think this is the safest place to eat. And you're right now, you're really right. It is the safest. And then, of course, the waitresses, we had a fun time with them. One of the, one of the waitresses says to me, she said, you know, this is the first time that I've ever had to complain to a home customer. We can only do what we can do. So it was fun. It was a good time, and we did raise quite a bit of money. And I want to thank Jay Jr. and Kerry Bolander for letting us do that. It was a very, very good opportunity for us. And then I also want to thank Ozark 313 for making all of our shirts and our hats for the K9 fundraiser. And if anybody still wants one, that QR code that's on our Facebook page, you can order it anytime they'll make them. So that's really, really all I got.
Fantastic. One thing, do you care to start including in your report? Can you give us an average per year on arrests that we make?
Yeah.
If you don't care to, get that column there and do your formula and.
You want it on that, the fourth?
Yeah, on this for them.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, fantastic. Any questions of chief? All right, hearing none, we're going over to the public parks department. Brian, what you got?
We actually did the ditch for the electric airport. We still waiting for the car electric to hook it up and everything. We finished the covert deal behind the pantry. We had the concrete for the bathrooms of the splash pad done, and then cutting brush and brush hogging is mainly the things we did.
And done a fantastic job. We, y'all, I'm a selfless plug for the pantry and their statement that they made about the drainage ditch up there. Thought that was very kind of them to make that statement and ask if they, we, obviously, thank you, Brandy, for sharing that to our social media page. Made a lot of difference up there, and we've still got a little ways to go.
Made a lot of difference up there and, and we've still got a little ways to go. So y'all have been absolutely thorough. And looking at the budget, don't want to scare everybody off on that, obviously. Looking at the street fund budget, there's been, and y'all can look whenever you get a chance. I don't know that we've got it to put up on the board. But obviously, we've, we've expensed a lot of money this year and we've done a lot of projects that we didn't anticipate doing this year. With the, with the flood issue that we had up there behind the pantry and refurbishing that, that ditch down through there. Know that there's probably going to be some appropriations later on in the year because of that. But Brian, I, I want to tell you, take the opportunity to tell you, you, you guys, I, I think this is the hardest year that the street department's ever had. And, and y'all have, have absolutely met every task face on. So we really appreciate the hard work and effort. And it, it, it goes without saying, I mean, the, the public really thanks you for it too. So, yeah.
Do we have a completion date for the bathrooms of splash pad?
It will be done before December the 15th, I'll guarantee.
Love that.
Well, if you go ahead and say it again, it will be done. Before December the 15th. It will be done.
He said guaranteed.
Guaranteed. It, it, it doesn't mean that you and I and Jared and whoever else in here wants to help volunteer, put in a wall, might not be down there at 12 o'clock midnight one night doing it, but we will get it done. So, there's, there's, there's 42,000 riding on that thing. So anyway. And by the way, since you, since you brought up the bathroom, be one less thing I have to report. We did get our second check from Arkansas Department of Heritage today in the amount of $80,655.70, I think was the total amount. So we're about, still about 42,000 shy, which they were very impressed. Had a conversation with them today. We kind of took the bull by the horn and went, you know, ran with it a little bit because some of the things that they have asked us to do or follow up with as far as ADA regulated sidewalks and things of that nature, we went above and beyond with what Lou Thompson had donated, you know, over there with the property. We've already improved that. We've got some handicap accessible spaces now so people can park right down on the park grounds. We have now 212 foot of sidewalk with safety curve on it. We had PaveCon come in. They were the cheapest bid on that. And then we had Mr. Miller, who's done a fantastic job on the, on the bathrooms. Went ahead and finished our sidewalks over to the splash pad, the ADA sidewalk over there, and the ADA sidewalk, actually much larger than ADA sidewalk up to the bathrooms themselves. So they were, they were impressed with the progress that we've made since, since we had our punch list last time. So all thanks to those guys right there. Brian, appreciate you staying on top of it and appreciate the guys for staying on top of it. Sean?
We've already covered our big stuff for the month. I will say next month, I plan to include a report for council that will outline our 2026 plans, pay projects, and special events.
Okay. Any questions of Sean? And I guess I should ask if y'all have any questions of Brian, too. Okay. Hearing none. Fire department. Kevin, what you got?
Just a few things. One, in the report to point out that our manpower is, is again that, that low way up in tide where we've got 16 active right now. But one of the positives is we've been receiving a lot more participation from the county departments training with us. This last week, we had members from Fort Moutland, Smurra, Willa-Roar Wesley, Hinesville, Panhandle, Keaton, and Mascanian, Mass. started training with us. Had a phone call this morning, some of the Knob Hill firefighters were going to train with us. So anytime, anytime we get folks training with us, that is a tremendous advantage for us. The training center that we're proposing to build next year, I don't know if anything goes through that, right? That's going to be a major advantage for us. We're working already on trying to get as many of the AFA, Arkansas Fire Academy classes listed as we can. We would like to over the next two years get as many of our long as tiers of firefighter one and firefighter two certification as possible so that fewer people with more training just makes it more efficient for us. And when it happens, that we know it's going to happen. When the square catches on fire again, or Harpers catch on fire again, we just don't have the same number of personnel available we once had. So trying to get them better trained. Of those 16 that we have that are active, all of them, blessedly and thanks to y'all in, in our training budget, have been able to go outside trainings this year. We've got three right now. Next week, we'll be going to Ohio for heavy education training. And our department is the only department in the county that has heavy education capability. When semis, school buses, whatever happens, we've got that capability. So getting more and more people trained on doing that, that's a big deal for us. In conjunction with that, I've been working with Greg Wheeler, who is the DM and fire service coordinator, on developing a tech rescue team. What that means right now, we've got the only swift water team in the county. We've got, we're doing the rope rescue, the heavy rescue, all those kind of things. So we're trying to branch out and get as many people from around the county and other fire departments available to come train and be part of that. So that we, it's not always dependent upon us. And when we have to go, you know, this last month we went to Marvel again for it. Another serious accident. We had to go out and sit there. So the more people we can get trained, how to use that equipment and do those things, that's what we're looking for. So, so I'm excited about that. I think that we're, we're moving in the right direction on that level. I think we are wrapping up our grant purchases for the swift water grant. So we get all that stuff handled, taken care of, and get that into play. Because we can certainly use those things. Other than that, you can see that our call volume continues to go up year by year. And when you look where we were as far as security going to where we are now, I, I don't anticipate that slowing down anytime going forward. So if you got any questions, comments, concerns, I'm here.
Okay. Hearing none. Finance director.
Nothing much. Just working on a budget right now.
Speaking of, either latter part of this week or first part of next week, we've, we've, we need to have another budget committee meeting. Is that all right with everybody? Okay. We'll figure it out and I'll have Carmen send out a text to everybody and...
Monday or Tuesday. Is that worth thinking?
Is that what you want to do? Monday or Tuesday? I think that'll be good. Brandy, you know my schedules. Okay. Monday or Tuesday be good. Yeah. So anyway, all right. All right, mayor's report. So I'm going to try to be as expeditious as I possibly can. Talk about the school district first. Give you all an update on that. We, we went back and, and, and again, I'll, I'll reiterate exactly what Chief Herring said. This was actually uneventful and as you all know, we, we took this thing over about two years ago and we only did a, a two-year contract because we, our first time doing it and didn't know kind of where we were going to end up or whatever. And so it was time for us to renegotiate the contract. Chief Herring and I sat down and had conversations with Sergeant Melton in regards to where our deficits were, what the pros were, what the cons were. And one of the biggest things that, that kept on coming up was, was twofold. Number one was, according to AML and the attorneys down there, one of the issues that we were having, if you'll remember, the school district was paying a stipend for extracurricular events like, like homecomings, football games, basketball games, and things of that nature. Well, technically by law, to be covered under workman's comp, they suggested that everybody's kind of going away from that style of contract with a stipend and that, that you just include it in the cost of doing business, obviously with the officers, right? So we, we took an approach to that and that was to the tune of about $9,700 a year that we knew that we were going to have to increase. Well, we went down, visited with Mr. Chalk and Mr. Ferguson and had, had really good conversations about where we were at and what we needed to do. The coverage that we needed to overcome, you know, obviously, it goes without saying, St. Paul campus kind of throws a hitch and everything and the fact that it's so far away. But there's, there's not enough coverage down there, needs to be. And obviously, the places that we need to cover the most are the high school, middle school, and the St. Paul campus. So we spent as much time as we possibly could going back and forth. And I said, "Look, it's time that we," and we brought it, brought it to them, "it's time that we may look at maybe increasing to a third officer for the SRO program." I was happy to say, and I'll report, that Bailey Cotton, Mr. Chalk, and Mr. Ferguson were all in agreement. And Mr. Chalk, this is his top priority, is making the school system as safe as they possibly, possibly can. I, I like the fact that he's very proactive. We had an incident, I think Josh helped me at the middle school the other day. And it wasn't, it wasn't same-day service. They actually advertised it a little bit ahead of time, it seems like. So I think they're trying to get, get the information out that they need to get out to the public, you know, obviously. So you can tell that they're kind of moving in a different direction there at the, at the school district. And this is, he said he would like to have one. He didn't give a specific timeframe, but in the next few years, we'd like to have a officer at each campus, every campus there to make them as safe as we possibly can. So I, I was real encouraged by hearing that from our new superintendent and his staff. And I can tell you though, I have to give special thanks to Bailey Cotton on this because I'm going to tell you, they, they work that kid like a rented mule. I'm telling you, he, he wears every hat at that school district and does a phenomenal job. So they kind of passed it off to him and we kind of got it negotiated. But I'll tell you where we're at with this. And, and actually, looking at several school districts across the state of Arkansas, we kind of took the role after, after a lot of those other school districts, more metropolitan school districts, I should say. So how our, our end up, how we ended up splitting this up was this. Obviously, our sergeant over the SRO program, we're doing a 75-25 split with the district compensating 75% of the salaries and the Huntsville PD covering about 25% of the salaries. The district will pay $58,875 and the PD will pay $19,625, which will include raises and, and the extracurricular activities that we need to include for workman's comp reasons. So that's, that's, that's fantastic. The next one, we stepped that one down to a 65-35 split. District is to pay $51,025 and the Huntsville PD is going to pay $27,475. And again, that covers the raises, bonuses, extra stipend events that they, or not stipend anymore, but extra paid events that we've got to attend to. The last one, we kind of put our money where our mouth was because we felt it was just as important as school district to give them the coverage. So we done a 55-45 split with the district compensating 55% of the salary and the Huntsville Police Department covering 45% of it. And that, that would break out as $43,175 the district will pay and $35,325 is what we will pay. And obviously, again, extracurricular activities and, and future raises and things of that nature as well. In the contract, Jessica, you did finally get to look completely through the contract.
Yeah, I sent you my notes on that.
Okay. There's, there's a couple tweaks that we're going to make with the contract. The district kind of took it upon themselves this year to do a more comprehensive contract. We want to make sure the wording's right, so we'll be looking at those. As far as the monies go, the school board has already approved this. And with your blessing, we'll approve it tonight, obviously. And, and we'll go over those changes maybe tomorrow. And, and Chief, I don't think you've had any changes to the contract. I've got it here. If anybody wants a copy of it, we can email it out to you or send it to you, whatever you'd like to see.
Can you just tell us what the city, just responsible for all three and then what the schools?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't add it up, but I can really quick do the math, hang on. Uh, 20, we're about $91,020. 47, yeah, roughly about 90, 92, 91, 92,000.
So the third officer would be January 26th?
Third officer, we're probably going to start and, and we'll come back with a budget amendment, probably to you all. We'll probably start because it's obviously, we got to find the right candidate. The school district is going to help us approve that candidate. So, so we'll have interview process that goes along with that. You know how arduous that can be from time to time to, to look at that. So we would like to at least go ahead and start advertising for it. I'm going to say, best case scenario, we get already a qualified officer that applies for that, probably mid-November. So we're only going to have about a month and a half worth of, of unbudgeted things there. Now, what we can do is the school district is, Janice, the school district behind a month or two in their, in their payment.
They haven't paid any since earlier this year.
And they do, they do, they do basically how they pay. It's kind of, it was kind of hard to get used to.
From middle of the year to middle of the year.
Yeah. So, but they're, they're on the hook right now and they understand this. We had that in-depth conversation. So what we might be able to do is utilize some of the money that they currently owe us for the coverage that they've received since the beginning of the school year till now. We could use that to obviously help cover some of the expense of this officer if we, if we find one this year. So, does that sound all right? Okay, all right. Any questions about that? Any other questions about the SRO? Okay. Hearing none. Airport is, is completed and will request the final payment. If you'll remember back, gosh, six or eight, seven months ago, six, six to eight months ago, we'll just say that. We requested a, an initial payment. It's in January, wasn't it? In January. We, we requested an initial payment from the airport of the, of the $680,000 that we had, that we had got, you know, obviously in, in form of a grant. And they gave us $287,000 with what we'd already completed. Well, now we're, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak. The electrical's been pulled. Car electric kind of changed the dynamic of some things up there. We're actually putting in a double-headed meter, whatever they call it. They call it something else. But anyway, they're putting in that. It's, it's going to cost us a little bit on the front end, but what it does is it makes it a lot easier for expansion up there whenever we get ready to do it. So, once we get that electrical up and going, there's still about $393,000 left at the state level that we'll be receiving. So that's good news, but glad to see that that's finally coming to fruition. We'll start the rent. We're a little bit behind on the rent part of it. As you know, the airport's reimbursing us for the purchase of land and things of that nature. We're going to have to work through that. They did go up on the, on the rates there at the airport. So CORD is one of our commissioners and, and, and we'll, we'll sit down with them in detail so I can, I, I won't be speaking off the cuff whenever I bring it back to your attention of, of when that's going to start and when it's going to happen. Any questions about the airport? I mentioned that the 80, almost 81,000, $80,655 came back in from Arkansas Department of Parks and Heritage. 42,000 of it, we're still waiting on. That'll be December the 15th. Whenever we complete the bathrooms, we'll get the rest of the money. That's going to be a little bit lengthy. I, I want to, I want to give a quick shout out here because this is important that we recognize this. And, and later on, we'll have some resolutions because of this. But I'm telling you, it's been absolutely a godsend, this new parking area that we have there north of our park. People are starting to utilize it. Street department guys have done a phenomenal job on getting that thing ready as quick as they have. And I want to, I'm, I'm, something, something happened the other day and I just feel like I need to elaborate on it. Obviously, you know, the late Lou Thompson, in about 15 minutes of conversation, had called back and said, "Hey, I got a better idea. You give us a certificate of donation for our taxes and we'll just give you the land." That's how that works. So you're looking at about $65,000 to $70,000 worth of tax credit there. Well, then the other day, we done the, the drainage dish there behind the pantry well. We don't own the equipment to, to get, get what we needed done, done. We had to dig down in some places 21 feet deep to unearth this, this 48-inch pipe. And so we reached out to Josh Thompson, Lou's son. He owns the equipment company and asked if we could rent a big excavator, 54,000 pound excavator that give us the reach on that. And the other day, Josh sent me an email and he said, "Hey, look, let's do the same thing on that as we done for the, done for the land." So he gave us $9,749.70 worth of free equipment lease. I mean, guys, that's, that's close to $80,000 in a matter of six months' time. That's, that's phenomenal. And we just really appreciate the Thompson family for doing that. Thank them so much for that. And it couldn't come at a better time, especially the street department, as much money as we've spent this year. So we just really appreciate them and I wanted to give that shout out. We will do, actually, I'm going to read something first. You know, we had an emergency management meeting here a couple of weeks ago. I'm sorry, I've had two surgeries so, since then. So I don't, I don't remember how long ago it was, to be honest with you. But one thing that was very poignant to me, we had Ms. Mitchell, Lola Mitchell, who is our dispatcher, our head dispatcher for the county, in there. And I'm, I'm known Lola a lot of years, went to school with her and, and I, I get it. I understand where, where she's coming from completely. But anyway, I had a conversation with her today and she asked us, and Sheriff, I'll probably get with you, she asked us to come down and, and look at, at what they have to deal with a lot of times on these calls and that's what we need to do. I have given a directive to Chief Shin and to Chief Herring that we communicate any and all issues from now on directly to the sheriff, directly to the judge, myself, and whoseever department's involved, to be proactive instead of reactive to these things. But you could tell in this meeting with, without kissing and telling, you could tell in this meeting, you know, she was very hurt by some of the statements that were made in this meeting. So I've, I've created a statement which I'll issue it to the newspaper as well. In light of recent discussions at our last city council meeting, I'd like to take a moment to offer clarity and extend a gesture of goodwill to Ms. Lola Mitchell, head dispatcher for the Madison County and her entire team. Some of the information shared during the meeting may have been misunderstood or unintentionally conveyed in a way that did not reflect the full context and regrettably, may have portrayed Ms. Mitchell as uncaring or indifferent in regards to the handling of recent events. After personally meeting with Ms. Mitchell and hearing directly from her and her representation of dispatch, I want to publicly state that this was never our intent. We hold Lola and all our dispatch, dispatch professionals in a high regard. Their role is among the most demanding in this county, requiring extraordinary skills, composure, and dedication under pressure. We fully recognize and appreciate the critical service they provide to our community every single day. Please allow this message to serve as a reaffirmation of our respect and unwavering support to Ms. Mitchell and the entire Madison County dispatch team. We value their partnership and committed to support them in every way that we possibly can. Thus, the conversations that we had in that meeting means that from now on, everybody will be included in conversations. And I mean everybody. It's a directive and that's what I expect from now on. There, we, we cannot get down in the weeds and I won't allow us to get down the weeds in regards to, well, this person said that, this person said this, whatever the case may be. It's better to confront this face up and figure it out as we go along collectively instead of as individuals. So that's what we're going to do. That's, that's what we're going to try to accomplish with this. Ms. Mitchell did, in talking to her, and Sheriff, I'm glad you're here tonight, I would like to go down, because you're supposed to come up with an outline to send over to the sheriff at some point in time or to the sheriff and Greg. Greg, I didn't include you. My apologies. As to where, where we're at with this maybe potential antiquated way of doing business and what we would like to see done and see if it's even feasible to get some of these things done. So we need to be proactive in that. So Wednesday, she said not to come Tuesday because it's court day, I guess. So we won't go up there Tuesday to bugger. But Wednesday, I would like for all of us to go up to dispatch and just see exactly what's going on. So.
Mayor, we've got Thursday, we'd have the Mascanian Fire Chiefs Association meeting. So we're going to go back over the box lounge, everything we had given to the former judge.
Okay.
So we'll have all that stuff ready after this to make sure we get that up.
Again, like I say, make sure that you document and outline, kind of, kind of, because, and I will say this, after that meeting that we had, the emergency management meeting, I surely did not feel as though it's, it was anybody's fault, per se, in the fact that miscommunication, frequency changes, altitude changes, things... that miscommunication, frequency changes, altitude changes, things of that nature, makes it difficult to communicate on these radios. We live and there's nine mountains around us. I get that. We just gotta figure it out and we need to be more proactive than reactive. So, that's my statement to Ms. Lola. Uh, y'all pat her on the back every chance you get because I know she is dedicated to what she does down there every day and she does care tremendously, uh, for, for our students, for our, our community. So, make sure that you pat her on the back next time you see her. I have got, okay, I've got a request. We've got a, we've got a, uh, update on our car out here. Katie, you may remember where we bought this car. And we thought it's the best thing since sliced bread because we had a whole hunk of crap sitting out there, honestly, is what we had. And so, we were tickled to death to use it. Well, we have not only used it, but we've used it quite well. And it was offered, uh, to us by Jason Yates the other day to, uh, to trade that thing off while, while we can and still get some money out of it. So, my request for you all, from the mayor's side of it, is we found a two thousand twenty-four or twenty-five, I've got it here on my phone, um, twenty-four, twenty-five Nissan Pathfinder, four-wheel drive, uh, and we've been offered, I think the sticker price, and I'm not, I can't blow that up, but I think the sticker price somewhere around thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand, uh, and we've got, uh, an offer on the Jeep and they're, they're prepared to trade with us, twenty thousand dollars difference. So we're gonna ask for the twenty thousand dollars to upgrade our Jeep to a Nissan Pathfinder or some semblance thereof. It's a certified pre-owned car, uh, which means it still has, um, five years and, and fifty thousand miles worth of warranty left on it.
So is there money in the budget anywhere for that, or is it gonna even have to be allocated?
I think it's gonna have to be allocated.
What's left in the, um, the, uh, what?
They just put me up to asking for it. You have to ask Carmen if we get the money.
We're gonna have to check first.
This is covered, not our, so.
I don't think you're, uh...
I'm looking.
Hang on, folks in the audience, we'll get an answer here. You're asking a question Carmen don't even have an answer to. All right, while we're waiting on her, we'll move on to something else here. Um, while we're waiting on that, we'll, we'll come back, we'll work back around to the car. You know, we allotted, last year in our budget, we allotted for fire department fifty thousand dollars, uh, to purchase, or going towards the purchase of a fire, a ladder truck, and then we offered another fifty thousand, uh, for the upgrade, uh, in, in the training facility. So after the meetings that we've had with the ISO people, uh, which I'm gonna tell you, my personal opinion about that is I'm, I'm still a little bit out on the ISO thing, just to be quite honest with you. But, it is what it is and they dictate our insurance rates here locally. Uh, we're about four points away from, uh, ISO rating of two, four or five points away from ISO rating of two. After the meeting that we had with them, it appears that they owe us a few points, that they've kinda bogarded from us. Um, there was something about dispatch that they were doing that they hadn't given us credit for. There was, there was a couple of other things that was involved in that. But anyway, long story short, we're gonna fight the good fight with them and argue the fact that, you know, you owe us a couple of points. The biggest way to get to that threshold of ISO rating of two is with training. I don't, there's, there's not much wiggle room in all the rest of the, how many, how many, there's like twenty different categories.
Training, yeah, there's the, there's the facilities and then there's the different categories of training, how many hours. Each firefighter's supposed to get sixteen hours a month. We get eight, eight plus whatever else we do, but the training facility.
The, the training facility's a big one and it's a way that we can...
The live fire and those things we want.
So, with that said, um, you know, I'd ask Kevin, he went to a, a fire conference and he brought back some information and one thing that I'd really cabbage-don't to that he brought to my attention was from government capital finance. And, um, one way that we can get to where we need to be, uh, a lot sooner than later is instead of nickel and dime in each month or each year at budget time, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, you've already got enough in there right now to make the first year's annual payment on this note. The other thing that's come up in, in recent, um, well, last week, I guess, had a, had an interesting conversation with, um, with the people that own, uh, the First National Bank building right next to the Bashiell building, okay? And in that, they've, they've dropped the price again, uh, and two of the partners want completely out of it. And, um, we have went back and forth. I, I thought, "Well, maybe I'm talking under them, maybe I'm talking over them." So I've asked Randy to have a conversation and I think Randy feels the same way I did in the fact that we're, we're working on a tax credit deal for them, so it's ultimately they get the same money, they just have to take it off on their, on their taxes. They, they don't see it that way. So they're, they're hardcore to the hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. So I'm gonna bring it before you all tonight because I, I told him that I would. We're now to a point, we started out at three hundred and sixty, then it was dropped to two eighty-nine, then it was two twenty-five, then it was a hundred and eighty, uh, now we're at a hundred and fifty. And if you'll remember, we had a, a very frank discussion about a year ago regarding, uh, "Hey, look, you know, if we could get the thing for about a hundred thousand, it might make a good bargain lot," obviously after what the engineers told us, uh, you know, that, that we don't know that we can do anything else with it, right? Um, so, in talk, in reaching out to this government capital corporation, this finance deal, I've had many lengthy conversations with him and, and if you'll know, if, if you remember, we put another two hundred and twenty-five thousand in that CD out there. We've got about three-quarters of a million, a little over three-quarters of a million now in savings. Now, we can opt to, to borrow money against that at a rate of about four percent is, is what it would be, or we could leave that, drawing interest and doing what it's, what it was meant to do for us. And, uh, they have come back with a really interesting rate and an, and an annual ability to finance because they've changed a couple, you remember, um, which, which one, Austin, you may know, um, the ability for a municipality to borrow money, used to, they were hamstring by five-year, ten-year? Five-year on certain things, ten-years on other things. Well, they've changed the law since, uh, and I think it's Amendment sixty-seven and seventy-five, or fifty-six and seventy-five.
Amendment fifty-nine and seventy-five.
Fifty-nine and seventy-five, that may, that may be right. Anyway, they've changed the amendment to make it a little easier for us as municipalities to borrow money. So it's, it's half a dozen one way, six the other. We can either borrow against the CD and save about a percent and a half from what the interest rate they're quoting, or we can leave the CD alone, continue putting money into it. We've already, we've already been able to, uh, uh, put in the fire department budget for this training facility, fifty thousand dollars, right? These are deferred, so we don't necessarily have to budget them this year. Um, the first payment doesn't hit until this time in twenty-twenty-six if we decide to do this. So what I ask him to do, because these are gonna be things that we can finance because it's, uh, ground improvement or real estate improvement with the fire station, makes it more impressive improving it, uh, with the training facility and, uh, the, the old First National Bank building over here. So I ask him to figure it two ways for me. Um, option one was to reflect no down payment, zero down, and about five hundred and fifty thousand, that'd be three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, about there, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, coming to the fire department and about two hundred thousand for the purchase of the First National Bank building with fifty thousand dollars in there that if we decide that we're gonna tear it down, that helps us pay for that. That was finance. You got a seven-year, um, annual payment, um, at five-point-three-four percent, uh, which is, uh, a, about a percent, about one-point-three percent more than what we can get at the bank. Or we can do a ten-year annual at the five hundred and fifty thousand, at five-point-four-six percent, obviously, uh, because we're financing a little longer. The terms of that, and the thing that I like about this financing, or the ability to finance this, is they are very simplistic in the way that they offer. It doesn't appear in all, everything that I've read, no hidden fees, no hidden contracts, no nothing like that. Or, I mean, like, there's no early payoff penalty or anything of that nature. So, annual payment on, on that five hundred and fifty thousand with zero down would be ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents, uh, based on seven years, or it'd be seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and forty-four cents, uh, annual payment, uh, based on, um, ten years. Now, what, what does that mean? That means that sixty-four percent of that, uh, will come out of the fire department's budget and the other thirty-six percent of it will come out of admin if we do decide to buy the First National Bank building. They also add, added a, a secondary option that if we, um, uh, reappropriate the money that we've got in the fire department fund right now, the hundred thousand that we put in there last year, or last budget year, we could use that as a down payment, finance four hundred and fifty thousand, same interest rate, and then your annual, uh, payment, uh, for seven years would be eighty thousand, uh, forty-two dollars, and then it would take it down respectively to sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eleven cents. Now, you're, we're going to see, in, in the next three months, we are going to see interest rates drop and if President Trump gets his way, uh, we'll see a new, uh, Treasury Secretary, uh, probably in March, I would say. That's gonna change the whole dynamic of interest rates where we're at. Um, so I'm gonna say at least another half a percent this year at least, and then it could be substantially more than that. The reason I tell you all that is, is we can enter into this agreement right now and we have a deferred payment at this time next year. At any point in time, at any point in time, the way that I understand, uh, if, if the interest rate is, seems to be a, a little more in our favor, we can at any point in time refinance this for the exact same terms that we're financing it for now. There's no prepayment, there's no, um, extra that we have to do. I think I read i- in the contract that I think it's a twelve-month period. Once we finance, you have to keep, keep that payment for twelve months and then you can refinance after the twelfth month. But, I tell you all this, say this, um, training facility's absolutely, um, necessary and I think not only what it does for us here as the city, uh, but what it can potentially do around the county, uh, to help get all these guys trained. Now, it's gonna be some legwork from our street department side because we're still looking at, uh, a total cost of right around five hundred thousand for this thing, but we think that padwise and building the roads and all of that, these guys are worthy and well-qualified and they can get that done. We've never had that before, so we're gonna utilize them, um, to, to get some of that done, to defer some of the costs that we're gonna have on the front end of this. My biggest thing is, is adding ninth hour to this is the, uh, First National Bank building. Look, we talk about it all the time, we talk about it almost every time we, we visit about the Bashiell building. You know, that thing was on the chopping block a couple of times before we decided to do with what we've, we've done with it. Now it stays booked all the time. I have no idea, and I know you all look to me for the answer, but I have no idea what we can do with the First National Bank building, to be honest with you. But, we cannot, um, allow it to set vacant and be a harbor for vectors and we have a lot of issues around the side of the building that he's promised that he would still clean up if we needed him to. That's something that can come later on for us to decide, but at that point in time, if we buy that, that building adjacent to the Bashiell building, there's more land that goes along with it. I think the, uh, three or four bay garage in the back goes with it. My point is, is we do it now and we become, again, the masters of our domain on the square. Uh, we, we kinda write our own history at that point in time. We can have discussions, I can formulate a subcommittee. I don't think this thing's gonna get any cheaper. Um, Randy and I had that conversation with him the other day. I said, "Hey, look, why don't we do this? Hundred thousand this way and fifty thousand for tax credit." No dice, he's got partners breathing down his neck and he's like, "Look, it's a hundred and fifty, if you want it, great, and if you don't..." He said, "We'll walk away and if you, if you don't..." It, it, we don't know. I, I mean, we're, we're really trying to ramp, ramp it up and, and, and sell it right now. It's, I think it's listed for a hundred and fifty-nine, is that correct? Yeah, yeah, a hundred and fifty-nine. We can buy it for nine thousand dollars cheaper for a hundred and fifty. So, I'll open that up for discussion. I'll take any discussion from the audience as well if they'd like to get up and say anything about that. First and foremost, obviously, the training facility. Um, if y'all decide or wish to, to go this route as far as the financing of it, uh, you know, obviously, there's some things that we're gonna have to figure out and talk about. Um, and, but at, at least we need to start the process so we can get this training facility. I guess at that point in time, it comes to the, to you all to decide if you wanna put a hundred thousand dollars down with it, if you don't wanna do that, uh, if you wanna put fifty thousand down with it, if you don't wanna do any of it at all. But, to be transparent, I have to bring it before you all so we can have an open and frank discussion about it, so.
Fifty thousand, we set aside for the ladder truck.
We did.
So I think we just weren't...
The fifty?
The fifty, that, I mean, that's what we appropriated it for.
It is, but, you know, if it knocks down, the, the only point that I'll make is if it knocks down, uh, payments by over a thousand dollars a month, even though they're annual payments, if it knocks it down over a thousand bucks a month, it might be something that we reappropriate, uh, or we might not even have to do that. It might be something that we put less money in whenever we budget for it this year. Leave the fifty thousand and just put less money in this, this upcoming year, so.
We'll also point out that the trainer for the fire department as well, but we'll also call Chief Herring over here, so long, we'll take advantage of that as well.
Yes.
Even the things, we're gonna be working on that.
I'm assuming that EMS can train out there, any fire department?
We, as, as we've been doing, we're gonna train with every department, wants to come in and train. Like I said, we're offering fire academy classes, so that means that everybody, anybody, everybody wants to come in and train.
And, and sheriff's department, and anybody can come in and train.
Anybody wants to come use it, yes.
Okay.
Like I said, all we've got is each other. We, we talked about this all the time, so.
Okay.
We can train together, we're good, it's part of what we're trying to do. And it is, it is one of the things we gotta have, so.
And, we can separate this out too, I'll just have to, I'll have to email you different numbers. If, if you all are not interested in the First National Bank building, that's fine. But I had the conversation and I will say this, Jennifer, you may know a little bit about this, um, they have now listed, instead of commercial, they've listed as residential, correct?
Um, I've had several calls about it. I did not specifically look up their listing.
Okay. Well, someone had told me that they had listed, and I don't know if that's the case, but they had listed it as residential. Obviously, you're gonna have more of an uptick in, in people looking at it. We've had, we fielded a couple of phone calls last week about the, that building. Um, but at the same time, we're kinda to the point and it's what I stressed to Mr. Mattson. Look, we went from about one complaint every two weeks to about one complaint a week to about one a day. And, and whenever I say complaint, I use that loosely in the fact that I, I, I say that and it might be somebody that hits you up at Harps or somewhere else, say, "When the hell are they gonna fix that thing over there?" You know, it's the eyesore up here on the square. Whenever I drive up to the square, this is what it looks like, right? I get it, I understand. I mean, we can't save every place on the square, obviously, but we're getting down to a reasonable amount now that, and obviously parking is at a, is limited over there. So depending on what we done with the building, whether we rise the building and make parking out of it, or a common courtyard there, I mean, that's, that's, we can put together a committee if that's what you all wanna do, kinda study that, but we need to decide if we're interested or not interested in that.
What did we base our sales tax on for the budget? I was trying to find that and I can't. When we made the budget, what was we going sales tax on?
The sales tax.
Looking at that, Kevin? Does that save you any administrative money if they train local instead of having to send them other places? Does that help on that front?
Well, it helped to a degree on the firefighter, one firefighter, two here. That's, that's the basic stuff. For the more advanced stuff, we're still gonna have to send them to different locations. For the more advanced stuff, we're still going to have to send them to different locations and different places for that.
And I'll say in a facility like that, training facility, even for law enforcement, when you start putting on your own classes and other departments come over and pay for those classes.
So just a little over 100.
Obviously that benefits all the parks, so.
Did you get that answered?
Yes.
130?
1.3.
1.3 for the year? Okay.
And I'll say something else too. I have, he talking about filling in complaints, not really filling in complaints, but people see the Basham building and what the city did with the Basham building and I get this constantly, okay, the Basham building looks great, what's the city going to do now with the, they will like, well, I have to re, I have to tell them constantly, well, it's not, it's not the city's, it's not ours.
You know.
Well, to that point though, there's not a whole lot to be done, right? Is that the point?
No.
I mean, the point of the thing we commissioned in the first place was that there's not a whole lot to be done with that building.
And I'll, I'll say this, that's, I think that's my biggest fear is, you know, we've done this with the Basham building. Todd, Jason Yates, several others donated countless hours of time to go over there and refurbish this thing, right? We don't, you know, Todd's retired now, Jason's still willing to help whenever he can, Todd's still willing to help, obviously, whenever he can. But, but at the same time, my biggest fear is, so, so let me say it this way, it's kind of a sticky wicket, especially those in elected positions, which we all are. You're going to have about 30% of our population say, how dare you tear that building down? And then you're going to have 60% of them probably say, tear it down, right? So you're not going to satisfy anybody with this. I'm, I'm telling you that right now. The other thing is, is we need to be upfront and honest. We had a windfall of money come in whenever we, uh, uh, sun set our tax, obviously. There was some monies that we had there, thank God we put it in the bank and saved some of it, but at the same time, we, we done some things with that money, made wise investments, sold the industrial park land, done some things to make some, some money on this thing. This, guys, I'm telling you right now, it's not going to be a miraculous change like the Basham building was. This is going to take some effort and this is going to take some discussion and some hard discussion at that. And however we do it, I think that we invite the public in to get feedback from them on what we're going to do and how we're going to do it because, look, it, it's one of those deals. Me personally, yes, I like the idea of owning it. That way we get to make the decisions from here on out. The, the flip side of that is, is I'm scared to death to own it because now it's a liability. And that's, that's the thing. So you're kind of stuck in limbo in, in a kind of a precarious situation and the fact that I would love to say, oh yeah, we can wave a magic wand and turn it into City Hall in the new court.
And you also get an engineer's report saying it should be condemned.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, and we've got an engineer's report that says it needs to be condemned.
It's not safe.
Yeah, yeah.
Which?
1.3 total for county and city?
Not that I would count it, those things for the city, the county's 450. Page two, contact.
Well, the one thing I think that we need, and I guess I'm, in my mind, I'm not thinking of using that building, but we have nowhere to grow. And I, I mean, when they were, water department was trying to find something like this, there's no place for the city to grow and I would say we'll be outgrowing this area pretty quickly.
I, you know, we had this idea, and I'll even say this, we, we've kicked this, this around for, gosh, 18 months or longer. I mean, Katie was still here whenever we were talking about this. We were talking about how cool would it be, just an idea, how cool would it be to fix that thing up like you see on Andy Griffith's show? The front of that with the old light burning torches and that's the city hall, right? So you go in the bottom and then you have the old fashioned elevator that takes you up to the court side and whenever that old lever style elevator that takes you up there and you walk out into the courtroom and that's the first thing you see whenever you walk in is the courtroom and council chambers, right? We have all these ideas and these are great, but they also cost a lot of money. And that's why, it, now, I will say on, on Shane's aspect, he vehemently disagrees with our engineers. Of course he does, he's still in the building. But he, he vehemently disagrees in the fact that he's got two engineer reports that, that say the structure's there for us to do something with. Now, he's not shared those reports with us and, and basically has said you can have the reports whenever you buy the property. But, you know, that's kind of a sticky wicket too. I, I'm just saying, I wish there was something else I could give you or something more that I could, especially if we're using taxpayer dollars to, to purchase a, a piece of property. Uh, you know, I think eventually we can make it better, but it's not going to, Rome won't build in a day and it's not going to happen overnight, so.
So I guess here's my question, what's the downside in waiting?
We, we.
Somebody else buying it.
Somebody else buy, that's not really a downside though.
You know what I mean? Like someone fixes it up, that's what we want.
That would be great.
Okay, bye. Don't fix it up.
Ask, I mean, we got two, three in here that, so if it had to be condemned and tore down, what's our cost? You would think I'm doing that.
Well, I've done a lot of these.
100,000?
Uh, no, I don't think it'll be that much.
In the shape, I mean, where it's at?
It all depends if we can get ADQ to cooperate on temporarily permitting, for example, Jason Yates' place where he's filling down there by the river, needs to be filled in with dry goods, dry dirt and rock and concrete and things of that nature. If we can talk to ADQ and maybe utilize his, his place, that saves us as far as the disposal goes of it. So that cuts 70% of the cost out that's associated with tearing this building, or probably even greater than that. Uh, I think that we, okay, give you an example here. For a house, an entire house, the first one we tore down was 6,800 bucks. We done all that ourselves and we had, we hauled them off in roll offs. That was the biggest, that was the biggest part of the cost. The second house that we condemned and done was about seven, the one on Kane, was about 7,300, but no, it was about 7,500, I think. It's in the $7,000 range, but they had a shed full of stuff.
Yeah.
And the house was full of stuff, so we had to get all that out there as well. So that gives you an idea. And that, both those houses were, does anybody remember? I think one of them was, it was two-story, it was about, the cheapest one was two-story, didn't have a lot in it. Uh, it was probably less than 2,000 square feet, somewhere in there.
Yeah, they were, they were both clearly small houses.
The other house was about 1,500 square feet.
Yeah, that was a lot.
The cool thing about this over here though is, is like the basement aspect of this, you could probably reutilize that as you're tearing it down. I mean, you know, obviously if, if you decided you wanted to build on top of it, you could utilize the basements. It's in, it's, the basement, I hate to say it, but the basement to me is probably the best thing about it. Um, it's got good walls, good concrete, you know, not a bunch of sluff off like we have over here, uh, whenever we had to have them take the marble down. There's none of that that goes on in the basement, so. So you're still looking at about 4,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet to tear down? Yes, sir.
Someone who's paying taxes every couple days. Can we get appraisal on it? A good, a good paid appraisal for anyone that, you know, what actually worth?
Yes, I, I, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem with getting an appraisal. It's going to cost between seven and 1,100 bucks, probably maybe even 1,500.
Probably about 25.
I don't, and I, I hate to say it because I'm not, I'm certainly no appraiser, but I, I don't know what you would value the raw property at. You know what I'm saying? I think that's going to be kind of hard to do. I, I mean, I'm game for whatever y'all want to do. I also don't want to spend a bunch of money. We're going to buy it, let's buy it and, and figure out what we're going to do with it or whatever.
Well, and in the past, we've always got appraisal, like even for the property, but we didn't have to use.
We didn't have to use the appraisal, yeah.
It's kind of a waste of money if you're going to buy it.
Yeah. The, the thing about it is, is you're going to be, well, last appraisal we got, I think we waited eight weeks, six or eight weeks for that appraisal to come back. So we're probably going to be in that, in the same boat, six to eight weeks for another appraisal to come back.
My big question is, has it been surveyed?
We had it surveyed. Or, yeah, we, didn't we, Steve? We went over and looked at it.
I think, well, I think they have their survey, their property, well, they own. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
I'm going to throw this out, you know, this was a pretty good subject to cover pretty quick and it's a timely manner to a certain degree. I would like to just table this, form a committee, go over some material, have a better understanding and come back maybe next month and then present what we found out and answer some more questions and go from there.
Absolutely. I'm fine with that.
I'm, I'm fine with that because I, I just cannot stomach the thought of spending that much money going upstairs and falling through a floor and then raising the whole thing.
Or us becoming liable for it.
Absolutely. All right.
Yes. Yeah, so I'm, I'm on board with that. That sounds.
All right, so I need a motion.
Second, motion made.
I'll make the, Steve made second motion. Steve made a motion. You're second.
And we'll put you down as third, okay? So first, second and third there. All the favors are aye.
Aye.
All right, last thing and we'll move on.
Hold on, let's go back to the vehicle.
Yeah, the vehicle, the training facility.
Yeah, we had it landed on.
Yeah, we can come back around to it. Yeah, let's, we've got two, two visitors here. Uh, let's talk about the court deal because this is going to be a little extra dishes too. So.
Are we skipping ahead to do business or do we want to?
No, I'm going to give everybody the ins and outs and then they can choose to do whatever they want to later on. We're, this is going to be just for substance reasons. All right, so, um, on the court side, Act, whose was that?
Not it.
Act, pardon.
371.
What, 371? Act 371. All right, basically the state has said of, of, of the court.
Court costs.
Court costs, y'all help me out with this.
The uniform filing costs and fees.
Yeah, uniform filing costs and fees. So we had had a conversation, I think Austin and Amanda have come down and visited with the judge at some, our judge, Judge Ramsey. I went up and visited with them. Uh, we've, we've had, we've had a conversation. I think there's a, a bit of, we'll probably go back and forth here a little bit, but let me tell you the gist of it from the city side of it. Right now, we cover, uh, out of our general fund budget, a, a budget of 147,231.34 for our court, okay? Of that, about 120,000, 194.09 is current payroll and benefits, okay? Right now, in district court, depending on the month, I'd say a good average would be about 72%, 28% probably would be a good, a good split. But in any given month, whenever we hear court cases in here, now we're, we're covering the budget, remind you of 147,231. Every court case that's brought, about 70% of those court cases are from the county to district court, okay? Uh, which means the city would take, take in about 25 to 30% of the rest of the court cases. So my point is, is most of the court cases that are heard here in this district court are from the county, all right? Right now, currently, the county gives us 23,266.4 and another 1,500 that they just added for supplies and things of that nature to the total amount of 24,790, I'm sorry, 766.4. So right now, if you divide that out, what we're currently getting from the county, the 24,766, even though they consume 70 to 75% of the cases in here, they're paying 17% of the court cost associated with, with what we do down here at district court. The city pays 83% of that. Since 1994, we've worked off a retained share and that share has been 2,291.69.
2290.69.
2290.69 to the county and then about 30.
33.46.
33, 4, no, how much?
34.86.35.
34, 86, 35, okay. Well, with this new act, 371, basically they're saying, so first, let me tell you, basically they're saying, um, we don't, we're not having to pay the judge's salary anymore, so that's going to be a savings to the county and the city, 8,378.57, okay? We went up and visited with Austin and Amanda regarding this. Again, won't get down the weeds with all that conversation, but at the same time, we started to seek counsel from Jessica, I think Austin was, or not Austin, but Alex was contacted. We've talked to the AAC attorney, we've talked to AML attorney and what we had formulated that I thought was long-term and we may have some arguments there because I still think that that was what was inferred, but anyway, we had figured out a way to, basically the city becomes the clearinghouse for the county. Does that make sense? So of the remittance that we have to remit, 50% of it goes to the state and then we retain this other 50% of it for the county and the city, all right? So with that, again, keep in mind, these are, these are important numbers. Keep in mind the 17% that the county pays currently versus the 83% that the city's paying. Madison County will save approximately, oh, 8,400, 8,489, 80, 90 dollars, 89, 90 dollars, 8,490.29. In that, what we have, what we have talked about doing is if we become the, the clearinghouse for the county and the city, in the separation of those funds, we, we stand a chance as a county to increase what the county's putting in for, for court to the tune on average, now this is average, I think Austin had made mention of 24's numbers was about 43,000 extra dollars added to the bottom line. This year, we're on track for 37,000 and some change, but we have a way now, and, and you know, this has always been a blistering effect that the county and the city have always kind of been at odds with. And Austin and I were at odds today about, about this very thing. He's got his best interests to look at, I've got our best interests to look at. Um, I'm not, I, I'm not satisfied with 17% of what the county's paying and 83% that the city's on the hook for. So what we've done, what you're fixing to get into, and this is just to preface this, this resolution, you're going to vote on tonight, we're, we're going to accept it and send it over to the county and then the county's going to have a meeting next Monday night and they're going to discuss this. Now, the way that it was explained to me and the way that I understood it to be perpetual and not just to the end of the year, I'll, I'll make that clear. Now, I take up for Austin in the fact that he explains things quickly sometimes and maybe I missed that, but it's a way for us to, to balance what the county's giving versus what the city's been putting in, right? So if we collect like we're doing now, if we collect that, again, it's 37,600, I've got the number here, hang on, 37,000.
Those are averages, that's not.
Yeah, it's average, like, like Austin said, last year it was 43,000. If you never know.
If the deal wasn't placed last year, uh, just the portion of the county's money that the city would have gotten, that would have been 43,551.34, but like Mayor Dawson and Carter were saying, it is just a crapshoot every month, so it's unknown, like Mayor Dawson's correct, like right now if you averaged that to being current plus and then projected that through the rest of the year, it'd be about 37,000.
Yeah, about 30, almost 38,000. My, my point is, is this is a golden opportunity for us as a city to kind of level the playing field as far as the resources that we put into this since, and that we've always put into this and make, make the county, I hate to say accountable because they're already accounting for 24,766, so it's not about being accountable, it's about getting that, that fair share back to us. If we done it this way, you'd be looking at a share, county share of about 48% versus the city share of about 52%. We'd still be on the hook for about 4% more, but it's a heck of a lot better than an 83, 17% split, right? So I look at it as a golden opportunity for us to move in the right direction and, and make a difference in, in what we're doing right now as far as collecting money from the county. And I will entertain, I'll say this, it is my job to entertain. If the county comes back with a counter on that or whatever they want to, I'll bring it to y'all's attention, but that's what this resolution is about. And that's what we're, we're going, and we've actually went, went through, I think, what, twice now and changed different things. things. Larry come in.
Yes, because the last, we presented those last month to everyone.
Yes.
We made one change.
Local agreement.
Yeah. Judge Garrett, and Judge Garrett and I have, have agreed that, that we're fine with this, and, and let me reiterate this for the county side of it, since Austin's here and Amanda's here, they're the ones that handle the money. The, the thing that I'll say that makes it, that makes it work, is, is the fact that I don't think you'll get either one of them to argue with you that, hey, it's all in how you interpret it, or it's, it's all in how you look at it, and this is what the city's been fine with. I think that they, they're, they know that it's not going to make or break them, right? The county side of it. But the flip side of it is, is it gets it to a more equitable thing between the city and the county, and this has been contentious for so many years, and we have the opportunity to put our best foot forward and move forward. The county's not going to lose anything, they're actually going, they're actually going to make $111.70.
And you've, you've done the figuring yourself, these are your numbers?
Yeah. Our retained share of $2,290.69, increasing it to $2,300 a month, that $9.31 a month, multiply it by 12, this is where you get that.
Austin's done the math, we're good. Yeah. No, 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 you're not good yet, so don't, don't even say that, yeah.
My turn.
Yes, go ahead.
So, but everyone, Travis and I both give a little temperamental sometimes, so, but I want to thank Mayor Dawson and counsel for allowing me to be here and my, Amanda to be my backup. So anyway, we both, Amanda and I both worked on these numbers. The reason, uh, being is not only are we financial managers, but we were asked by Judge Garrett just to decrease any kind of conflict that might be seen in it, to actually work through the numbers ourselves, and not necessarily hammering the deal, but worked through the numbers, and I did, I went through kind of three different potential deal scenarios, just being one of them, that I think the form court would be interested in reviewing. The, to Mayor Dawson's point, whether it's through the end of the year or reevaluated the way that next year, we're looking at, on the form court, as you all know, and Jessica probably especially knows, is county law, municipal law do vary on what's allowed. So anything that's to be county funds that will have to be appropriated over basically what we, our expected income was, has to be appropriated by the form court on a yearly basis. So next year's wouldn't be appropriated if this budget's set in by the form court, and now that the laws changed, what was once our retained share was what was coming into the county as our money, now it's changed to this new formula where half of the uniform filing costs and fees that come from county ticket citations is ours, the other half goes to the state, and it's a similar manner for the city. So the city's citations, tickets, half of theirs, and as I think Mayor Dawson, since he's kind of ran through the numbers, in 2024, the, if the city only got the city's portion, they would be down $651.00 and some odd cents from what they're used to on the retained share. So right now, it's, on credit, you can save up right even, on worse, you can say you're paying a little less money. So, and the county does recognize that, and doesn't want the district court to be funding less than each of the form court members I've talked to so far, agree with that whole argument. But ultimately, any deal over and beyond what is the county's money does have to be appropriated by the form court. And that's the only thing that I'm actually here tonight is to explain the form court's position. So I'm just going to read into the record my opinion that I'm submitting to the form court. I kind of gave this to Mayor Dawson earlier, but I more formalized it writing, again, with less pace than a quick conversation of a problem. So, so firstly, I'd like to state upfront, I was part of drafting this current deal between the county of Madison and the city of Huntsville, for funding the district court in Madison County, and which is being considered by the form court. My purview in this matter was not to negotiate specifics, as that is directly in the hands of the respective executives of each county, so Mayor Dawson, Judge Garrett. Uh, this current deal is the one that Judge Garrett, to, in his credit, does think would be equitable towards the city, that he has historically, but that said, ultimately, it is the form court's decision, not necessarily just Judge Garrett's. He makes recommendations, but at the end of the day, it's them going to be appropriating the money. So Amanda and I were brought on to, again, hammer up the numbers and say, what can we do legally, which my authority is only to advise on legality and the implementation of budgetary audit concerns, and to generally be consistent with the updated law passed by the state legislature to the best of my ability. So my opinion to the form court would be the following, based on the complete 2024 uniform filing costing fees for District Court. These, again, so based on 2024 numbers, since we don't have all of 2025, it's hard to say, sometimes there's bigger ones, so it could be averaged out to 37, it could be over that what it was in 24, it could be under that, over 24, we have no way of knowing until the end of the year, unfortunately. So, in any case, so what I'll give to the form court is, if the county would be, if the county would be giving the city the excess in our uniform filing costing fees with the county keeping $2,300 a month, so the deal that you have currently, the county will give the city of a, a total of $43,551.79 of what comes from the county's portion of the tickets. If the county would give the city the difference in their short months, make up the difference while letting them keep the months of excess compared to their current retained share, the amount the county would be giving to the city is $3,112.81. Of the three I'm giving you, so far, this is the smallest total that's given to the city. And if that, to try to make sense of that, on a month-to-month basis, it's variable. So if I remember correctly, last month, there was five or six months that, based on the previous retained share, the city's amount that they collected was under the 34, 35, whatever, 3,400-ish, that, well, I can tell you exactly that, it's 34, 36, 03. So there was one, two, three, four, five, six, there were six months that you guys were under. So if the county basically covered that difference on the short months, would you keep in the excess? You would not only keep the excess, but the county would give you a total of $3,112.81. The third option is, the county and the city totaled the whole of the uniform filing costing fees, with this, the city would get an excess of $14,027.30 that they otherwise would not. So that would be based on, if you took the counties and the cities together and slid it 50-50, that would end up getting, in total, the county and the city both getting $55,881.27. So those are the three options. Amanda and I both kind of originally went over with Judge Garrett, that with the form court asking, and Mayor Dawson, I can give you a copy of this, so you have it as well. I can email it to him, so he can forward it on to the council as well, so. But in any case, these are the three options that I think the form court would want to potentially entertain. So with the one, the first one, where we're functionally getting the same money we're currently getting, so it's not creating any budgetary difference than you're currently getting. The second one, making sure that the risk is managed for the city and maximizing what the county's getting. And then the third one, being kind of like the compromise option between the two, where we both make more money than we're getting currently, discounting the district judge's salary that the state has now completely taken over, as Mayor Dawson said, we both were paying the same, so we're getting the same benefit. So I'm going, I'm just kind of treating that one as a wash in one benefit, one entity benefiting to the other, so. In any case, so based on my opinion as a primary fiduciary manager of Madison County, none of these deals will otherwise cause a budgetary deficiency of the county. So as Mayor Dawson said in my and Amanda's conversation with him earlier, regardless of what the form court chooses, it's not going to create a budget shortfall for the county. It's just going to be based on what, how much county funds that they would like to appropriate to the city, for the use of District Court. Because ultimately, anything over what we're supposed to do as a county, the form court will have to appropriate specifically to District Court, and then authorize Amanda's office to make that dispersement on a monthly basis. So beyond that, I just want to, I'll conclude by stating, I mean, I have the highest respect for Mayor Dawson and this council, and towards the government of the city of Huntsville. Mayor Dawson and his administration, as well as Judge Ramsey and his, have a different fiduciary, fiduciary operational responsibility for which to negotiate and uphold than does the form court. I'll continue to wish for a, a success of the city of Huntsville and District Court which it houses, as we all stand together in the future of our citizens and we do apart, and I submit this opinion in the good faith from which it was intended. So to that point, I will speak for Judge Garrett in the form court that everyone in the, in Madison County wants the city and county to continue working together and to make sure that we continue thriving. So we are luckily both in the position of being the envy of similarly sized counties and municipalities, that we are seeing more of our priorities being accomplished each year, we have increasing budget, we have increasing property values, more people moving in, so we have a lot of things going in our favor. So, and I want to continue to make sure that we work together so that all our departments function well, and because ultimately, we're in this together as the two primary government entities within this county. Functionally, nothing's getting done within the government without one of us or both of us working on something. And other than that, those are the, the numbers I'll submit to the form court, so that they do see some of the members of the county or Amanda out there, and they will make the decision based on these numbers. Again, what it is, all I can tell them, since I'm not the one making the deal or the one actually appropriating money, is that none of the three options will be a harm insofar as we're not going to have to fire, lay anybody off, or raise the threshold, or do anything that, it's just how much of what is ultimately the county's money, they want to incorporate towards the district court, and that's, that's what they'll be considering at the actual report that the form court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so finally, just using the numbers that he just gave us, again, remind everybody the lion's share of what goes on in this courtroom is between 70% and 75% based upon county. The county is currently paying 17% of 80, and we're paying 83%. So the numbers that Austin just gave us, basically, he's given them three options at their form court meeting. We can either get it down, or we can get it closer to a 48-52 split, or the county can go up 2% and pay 19%, and, and we're still on the hook, 81%, or they can go up to this $14,000 mark that he's talking about, 26%, and we can pay 74%. So those are the three options, correct?
Well, technically, there's a fourth option, and I don't think the form court would want to do, just, you know, be keeping all of the county's money. They want, they don't want your funding to be under what it currently is, so that would be the other technical option. I've heard no form court member mention that wanting to happen, so I guess I can't speak for all nine of them, but I highly doubt they would want that option, but technically, it is within their problem. Can I play just a slight devil's advocate on, I believe, her things that I know they're going to be bringing up at form court? The devil's advocate portion of it is that, one, as I'm sure Mayor Dawson has informed you, is, you know, currently, the only thing we're legally obligated to pay is half of the chief district court's salary. That was what, yeah, he said there used to be continued.
And they currently don't, don't, don't pay that.
What, we pay the salary, not salary fringe.
You, you don't pay all the salary of what she makes?
We pay half of what the salary without fringe is.
Without fringe, yes, yeah, okay.
So, I don't know if a lot of those are considered differently, but yes, to your home, we don't pay half of the fringe, so none of her social security benefits, her health insurance, her retirement.
Taxes.
So, the, so, yeah, the fine taxes. So that is the first bump off of the salary, the dominant half of the salary, and then the $1,500. So the devil's advocate portion of it is, under amendment A of the Arkansas Constitution, is when the district court was formed from municipal court. Technically, was the implementation of the law, I think was Act 1693 of 2001, that transformed the standing municipal court for the city of Huntsville into a district court. So that was a state determination, not county determination. So where there's four different divisions of the court system within the state, District Court, Circuit Court, Court of Appeals, and the Supreme Court. So the Court of Appeals and Supreme Court is completely operated by the state, technically, District Court is supposed to be funded by the state, but as of yet has not been fully funded by the state. That said, it was the state that placed the venue on the city of Huntsville, putting that burden of responsibility on the city government, and then at some time in the future, making the law where the county's portion, without county, venue district courts, because there are actually district courts within the state that are venue in a county government, not a city. Arkansas County, do you have any other?
Only two.
Blaski.
Blaski, so, and Blaski County does have city district courts, but they do house one within venue. Arkansas County is small enough, it'd be more similar to ours, that they have their one district court that is housed within their county, so. But that is, we think that determine that separation of the division of powers and responsibility, and ultimately, they're the ones that decided that it's, in this case, the city of Huntsville's responsibility, except for the half of the salary of the chief district court clerk. And that's the unfortunate history, is we're the county and city that went to court back in 2012, I believe.
2012.
So, 2012, between Judge Weaver and Mayor Hatfield, that ultimately, because the argument was functionally, kind of like Mayor Dawson was saying, what determines salary? Is it salary fringe? Do you ultimately have to pay more? The court determined that salary, so there's, and established the case law specific to it, that it is only the salary portion. So the, so the devil's advocate is, the state has put District Court on the city of Huntsville from its municipal court. We operate a division of the court, we operate Circuit Court, unlike a District Court, that's a constitutionally placed venue, it is placed in every county in the state, and it's, that has no variability, but we do house it, we do operate, and unlike in the city's case, where we're obligated to pay half the chief district court's salary, there is nothing the city is obligated to pay. And that's because once something comes to District Court, they are county prisoners, like, or they're county criminals, I should say, not disturbed prisoners, but once it moves to District Court, or, excuse me, once it moves to Circuit Court, whether it be an appeal from District Court, or from a felony citation from the city of Huntsville, they are county criminals, not divided in the same way that District Court is. And then it has to do with misdemeanor nature of District Court versus the felony nature of, of the criminal court specifically, but it also includes the other criminal, it includes juvenile, domestic relations, civil, and private. So they are ours, so we absorb the costs completely, but we do run the court, which, with, especially some of those criminal citations, technically coming from the city, but they're not city criminals, because it's within Circuit Court. They're just, in this case, originally arrested by the city. So devil's advocate cases, we do operate a division of the court system, you guys also operate a division of the court system, and that's the best, I suppose, apples-to-apples comparison that we'd make. It's not perfect, it's not, it's not what I call by apples to oranges, but it is a consideration that the form court thinks about, because they budget for Circuit Court, just like they, you guys primarily budget for District Court, and we budget our portion for District Court. So that's the, that's the devil's advocate.
I don't, I don't think there's any argument that the state has put this burden on each of us, so that, that lesson can go by the wayside. Point is, y'all are fixing to vote on something that's going to be taken back to the county. You need to decide if you want to table this, or if you want to move forward with the resolution, and, and again, I will remind everybody here, and, and as, as Austin says, and I'll agree with that statement for sure, he has a fiduciary responsibility to the county, I have a fiduciary responsibility as well as Carmen does to the city. This, this is way out of line, in my opinion, for where we're at and, and what's going on. 70% of the share in this court, and that's, that's on the liberal side, 70% of the, of the costs associated with what we have to budget every year of the $142,000, is, is manifested by that of the county, and all I'm asking is for a little bit level or playing field. My suggestion would be to this form court, let the JPs make that decision, and Austin brings up a good point there, it's not my decision, it's not Larry's decision, it's y'all's decision, the form court's decision. But if I look at it and do the math, and I think Austin would verify this, we're looking at. Um, but if I look at it and do the math, uh, and I think Austin would verify this, um, we're looking at seventeen percent is what they're currently paying. Potentially nineteen percent in what Austin's offered here tonight, twenty-six percent in what Austin's offered tonight. And then the last one would be about forty-eight percent. In my opinion, that's the one I think that we need to go with, and we need to see what the quorum court decides.
Uh, just a timing issue. I know you guys were talking about the annual budget. They got the annual budget.
Mm-hmm.
Is this something we?
We're doing this now and through the end of the year, correct?
Yes, through the end of this, um, the, uh, twenty-three hundred that we talked about.
Yes.
Yes. Right now, because our current budget is based off that original retained share of twenty-two ninety, um, sixty-nine.
We're forced to re-up our original retained share. We kept it as-is until the end of the year.
Yes. So, right now, it's.
But as far as for planning purposes, both for the city and the county, for something that would be effective January first, you know, time is of the essence.
Absolutely. That's why we're bringing it before you tonight, because we got to make some decisions depending on what the county.
This is the decision that we're making on what percentage.
No, we're, we're saying we support what we originally agreed to. It's what we're saying. We're saying how it was proposed to us in the beginning. That's what we're supporting. Then, we're done with our part. I went back and forth with Judge Garrett, and I think I can safely say that Judge Garrett is all about it, you know, obviously. Um, and, and all right with this. Uh, tell me if I'm wrong about that, Austin.
I don't, I believe that.
I, I believe that to be correct. And up until late, I think Thursday or Friday of last week, I hadn't heard anything from Austin or Amanda in regards to it. So, that's why we put it in the packet and sent it out to everybody to approve. So, we'll let it, we'll let the cards fall where they may with the, with the quorum court and let them decide.
I would also like to say that that does not include fines. This is only court costs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think the county gets like two hundred and fifty-one thousand a year, and we get like a hundred and seventy. So, there's, so they are getting, they are still getting money.
They're still going to get money with this. They're going to get exactly, the county's still going to get exactly what they were getting, plus the share of the judge's salary, eighty-three hundred and some change, and then, just like we are. And then they're going to get a hundred and eleven dollars on top of that, because we rounded up to twenty-three hundred instead of twenty-two ninety sixty-nine. So, they're not going to lose anything, correct?
No.
No.
Um, in fact, I'll even add, it was over what Carmen just said. We made two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars from our.
That's just what Hannah told me to do.
Yeah.
So.
So, fines, they make two hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
There's significantly more, and it's coming through the county side, the district court and the city.
Yes.
So Travis, you're saying, is there a proposal? Is something doable for us?
Which third? Tell, tell me which one.
He named off three proposals.
That'd be the forty-fifty split.
Forty-eight, fifty-two.
Oh, gee, I didn't mean the fifty-fifty split insofar, that's the first proposal. The fifty-fifty split would be only in the uniform filing costs. That's one, I think Travis said, like, twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent?
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-six percent.
Okay. So, that's, uh, would be twenty percent, twenty-six percent of the overall cost of district court. It'd be a fifty-fifty split in the uniform filing cost of fees. Um, because if you broke it down in twenty-four, we would have each gotten about fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, but it'd be equal number, uh, for both city and county. And then the state would get double that.
Again, and I'll add this, you're asking me, so I'm going to tell you. Um, his fiduciary responsibility is that to save the county as much money as he possibly can, or add to their bottom line as much as he can. Same, same job I've got and Carmen's got. The only proposal that I accept is what's written and brought before you all tonight at this juncture. We can, we can discuss it with the county. I can, I'll be happy to go to the quorum court meeting, answer any question, just like Austin is. We can all go if we want to. I'm fine with that as well. Um, but I think that right now is the time to balance this thing probably better than we've ever balanced it before in the past. And what it's doing is it's causing, in the past, it's caused undue animosity to where basically the county and the city shut down and wouldn't even communicate with one another. I, I will tell you this, because God is my witness and I'm sitting here, that will not be the case, no matter what they decide. We still have to communicate. We still have to get along and all that. However, I am vehement about where we're at in bringing this more into, uh, an equitable thing. The other thing that I'll add is a lot of other counties, Carroll County, we'll use that one for example. Carroll County generates, so, so they've got district, several district courts, right?
Three.
Two, two or three?
Three.
Yeah. All right. So, they've got three. So, the county, Carroll County, doesn't have to look at paying them as much as, as, as what we're asking for here, because they can share that with Green Forest and, uh, Green Forest's revenue and Berryville's revenue and Yerika Springs revenue, right? So, they're kind of, they're kind of splitting hairs as, as, as far as what their county's doing. I know we're asking a lot of the county, but I just feel as though it is time for us to do that and champion our own cause with the county as far as that goes. Look, I don't think it's unreasonable. I think it's more than fair. Uh, I think Austin would tell you, uh, in the, in the privacy, he understands exactly where I'm coming from.
Okay, I understand exactly where you're coming from. And I argued the exact same point when I was in Travis's position.
Yeah, yes. So, my stance is, we want forty-eight, fifty-two, not twenty-six, seventy-four, not, uh, nineteen eighty-one. We want forty-eight, fifty-two.
Maybe I'm missing the exhibit.
The exhibit one is what I'm missing too.
All that we have here is an interagency agreement.
Number.
Yeah.
That, that's.
You don't see the resolution?
The resolution is there, but it's.
We're entering an S agreement.
Yeah, there's all that agreement.
It don't give us no number. I mean, like, we ain't.
Yeah, that's, that's why we all have.
It was in my, it was in my packet, Carmen, today.
Yeah.
Thirteen, that's twenty twenty-three. Am I looking at the right thing?
Yeah, but we need them in at twenty-five, too.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Austin, with his watch, I would say about forty-eight, forty-eight or whatever, and more legal shares.
Yeah.
We, what is the thoughts and understanding that that makes it so negative for us to sit there and throw that out to the county?
Well, I'm not saying it's negative for the city to throw it out to the county. In fact.
But I mean, I mean, oh, okay, I think this is more like a realignment. You know, we've held this long, it's a certain agreement, and over time, it seems imbalanced.
The, to the point that I would, I would be in Travis's issues. If Travis and Carmen are to get his most money to the city's coffers as possible, uh, with your responsibility to run district court amongst your other responsibilities, um, city police, uh, public works, it's, uh, all within, just like, uh, we have our own responsibilities. Um, and we look to maximize the money we're going to have. So, to the point that it's a negative for the county, I don't necessarily think it is. That's why some people, uh, or in the past it's been used, um, fair and unfair. I don't necessarily like that terminology. But Travis used equitable, which is the, uh, I think the appropriate terminology to use. It has more legal standards. To what defines equitable is a variable, uh, construct of all the, because if you only looked at, as Mayor Dotson said, the, that we have seventy percent of the citation tickets, um, in case of equitable. I mean, now the burden on the city would be seen as extremely inequitable. Um, and from your perspective, that is the primary, um, factor of equitability. From the county's perspective, we, um, have to, you know, we look at, um, you know, it costs us around five hundred thousand dollars a year to run circuit court. We call a jury and it's, uh, we throw ten thousand dollars out the window, whether we use that jury or not. Um, so that's just the division of the circuit court. Then, there's the, uh, the services that the county works with the city towards, uh, you know, dispatch was mentioned. Uh, I think Mayor Dotson, all, all corrected. You guys, uh, give us thirty-five thousand dollars a year towards dispatch.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which was similar to, uh, the chief district court's certain, sort of salary, was the original salary. We went up on their salary since that original agreement, but not salary in fringe. Even at the time, the salary in fringe was about, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, but, so, uh, you know, we operate a dispatch service. Um.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you want to renegotiate that contract, we can do that as well, as long as you give me the forty-eight percent that we're asking for now.
Um, I'll say, still, it's not my prerogative to negotiate a contract, and I will stick by that, uh, statement. And.
The other thing that I will add, and, 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 and add to what, what he's saying, the reason I, the reason I think it's, it's a valuable time in which we do this. I'll, I'll remind everybody in this room that particularly cities our size, guys. All across the state of Arkansas, four hundred and twenty-nine of us, about in the same category. Every city has a certified sales tax, a dedicated sales tax for what they do. Meaning, we have one percent. Now, we get to take a lot of, of blame along with the county, and we're all right with that because we were proactive on the jail. We, we wanted that. You know, these are things that we need. And the only way to do that is to, to establish a tax in doing so, right? But I'm going to remind everybody in here, if I thought that I was out of line by asking this, we are one of the only cities around that has and has been doing with a one cent tax, where other cities, about the closest one to us, is a cent and a half of dedicated tax. So, we're doing far less with far less, or far greater with far less means right now than a lot of cities are doing, uh, with, with greater tax. But at the same time, and I'll, I'll bring that up, and that's what I would reiterate, we've got a JP sitting right back there. We're not asking for the world here. What we're asking for is our fair share to help offset the cost of district court. That is it. We're looking between thirty-seven thousand and, and, uh, and forty-three or forty-four thousand dollars, depending on what year it is. And some years won't even be that. We're just asking for that to offset, to help us offset our costs, to get a little fairer, more equitable, I guess is what I'm saying. It would be different if we had come before the quorum court saying, we're demanding, we're not demanding, we're asking. That's all we're doing. That's all we can do. That's, that's one thing. The other thing is, is this. Because of our support, and I'll remind everybody in this room this, because of our support in the jail tax and because of the, these other taxes, and, and I think Ronnie's back there, he can add to this too. We've not had near as much headache or turmoil when negotiating contracts as far as our, not necessarily bed space, but our prisoner housing at the jail, as we have with this. And this is not an instrument that Austin or Amanda come up with, or myself, or the judge, or the sheriff, or anybody for the, for the, nobody's come up with it. This is something that the states presented us with. I look at it as a golden opportunity for us to kind of levelize our district court and ask for more. And, and I'll tell you, I think, I, I, and I may be completely wrong about this, but just in conversations I've had with Judge Ramsey, he's all about what we're asking for here as well. And he's the one that has to decide these cases every week, or week, or every other week, I guess. But my point is, is this, we do a lot with what we're given. We're not going back to the well. We're not asking for taxes right now. We're not doing anything like that. Um, it's pretty comprehensive. I've had good conversation with both the judge and the sheriff about, about the jail. Uh, I think they're very supportive, uh, because they know that all of our citizens of this county pay that tax. My point is, is this, all I'm asking you to look at is a fair and equitable way to make the district court function a little better and not just off the backs of the city of Huntsville. That's all I'm asking for. Just look at it. Now, the only question I have for you, Austin, before you sit down, is whenever you and I and Amanda and Michelle had this conversation in that office, not once was these other two options brought up at that point in time.
That's correct. They weren't, because Judge Garrett makes the deal. Now, although Ed and I have talked about various officers.
So, can you give me a timeline? Be specific about the timeline. Can you give me a timeline of whenever this started to come to fruition? I mean, we're already, and, and you may not have known, but we're already working on the backside of this, uh, paying our attorney, talking to AML and all that, to figure this thing out, because this is what we thought you wanted. So, can you give me a timeline as to when this conver- conversation was cultivated and when you started having this conversation about the other two options?
Do you have options for Judge Garrett? I mean, it was really not. Um, we, uh.
Well, I could have, you mean just in general, or is it something?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my point is, is whenever we had our meeting up there, we had no conversation about this. We were fine with, with, with what we're proposing tonight. But I'm talking about the other two options that Austin said, the thirty-four hundred and the fourteen thousand.
I'll just, I mean, he's, I'll say the numbers were, uh, higher up because we didn't have these spreadsheets.
Not the numbers, I'm saying, when, when did you start coming up with these other options?
From the very beginning.
Yeah.
Like, we said.
I had multiple options.
The, basically, the lowest option would be for the county is the option currently on the table, uh, give or take the hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, so that we stabilize our budget for, for what it currently is. Um, the, then beyond that, we're like, well, the city could face a shortfall in any given month. We can cover the shortfall. Or we can put them in one pool and divide it in half. Those are from the get-go, where our, uh, forging paths, I suppose.
So, then I'll, I'll, I'll ask you this. Whenever you come down and you had the conversation with the count, or with the, uh, judge here, uh, Judge Ramsey, whenever you had that conversation, did you offer all three of these options?
When we came down here, we were actually ultimately looking for the numbers to get the data to actually.
Yeah.
So, we weren't actually.
Having conversation at that point.
We weren't sure what was legal at that point, what we were allowed to do.
Gotcha.
We were just trying to come up with what, what was possible.
Talk to Carmen, is because she's the one that has the numbers. So, we at that time weren't discussing, because that's about the time that, uh, Judge Garrett told me and Amanda, uh, gathered the data, so we know what we're looking at, basically. So, at that time, although we had already discussed, like, well, these are kind of our three ways to go, we, we're all looking at the data to support those.
We still didn't know in August, at that point, we had a conversation, if the law would allow for us to do it the way that we didn't talk about.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, I specifically remember in, in the office, we had a conversation about, well, we, we got to find out if it's legal. So, I, I concur with that. I guess my point is, is this, and, and not chastising you, Austin, or you, Amanda, obviously. But whenever I come up there to have these, you know, have these conversations, it would have been great to know what the other two potential options are, and we probably would table this.
Well, I don't necessarily agree, but as I said, we don't make the deals.
No, I understand you don't make the deals, but if you've been having these conversations with Judge Garrett since inception of this game plan, since Act three seventy-one, since you've had these conversations with him, it was not portrayed that way whenever we had our conversation up there in the office. All I'm saying. Again, no chastising. I'm just saying, if, if we would have had this, we probably would have looked at it a completely different dynamic in what we're, what we're fixing to discuss or do tonight. So.
Which is still Judge Garrett's prerogative.
Uh, understood, understood.
On that, um, I will note, in that meeting, it was primarily, this was, uh, you know, shortly after the August fifth, uh, changeover, exactly what we were doing the rest of the year, from mine and Amanda's, that was our primary, uh, uh, focus, was what are we going to do, uh, September, October, November, December, to make sure.
We were under the impression we had to have a signed agreement by September to finish out the rest of the year.
It was after our conversation that the, uh, I don't know if the municipal consent sent to you, but the A C sent us, like, uh, basically just do whatever you want.
Do whatever you want to do.
Yeah, do them up.
Yeah.
Um, worry about it at the beginning of the year.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate that. Appreciate you, Kenner.
Why wouldn't it be okay to table and see what the quorum court then proposes?
Well, I think we can go ahead and make our.
We can go ahead and make our suggestion for the quorum court. That way, I know exactly where we're at.
Let them say where we're at.
Yeah.
Before they.
That way, there's no question about where the city stands on this. So.
For the fortune of the city, you guys are passing a resolution, so it doesn't have to be ran in the paper.
Yeah, it don't have to be ran in the paper.
Like, ours will be in organs, whatever we pass, if we didn't go with it, pass directly.
Now, what I will say is, is if we pass this tonight, I will make sure tomorrow morning that I hand deliver this to Austin and, uh, and, uh, Judge Garrett, uh, to let them know what our intentions are as a city and what we're asking the quorum court to look at. Fair enough?
Cause you have to recap.
Mm-hmm.
Which one of these options is this amendment?
Our option is, our, our option is exactly the way that we're doing it for the rest of the year.
Fifty-two, forty-eight.
Fifty-two, forty-eight.
Roughly.
Fifty-two, forty-eight.
Yeah, this is the same agreement that we presented last month with one change on paragraph two, that basically the city would, uh, permit the payment to the county of twenty-three hundred on the tenth, on the fifteenth, like we had before. And they also.
Is that still fine with you, Amanda?
I'm sorry?
The tenth? You want the money by the tenth, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, there would also be a letter stating from, uh, how much the county charges were paid to administrative justice funds section for that month. So, that's the only changes made from the month that we had this.
I'll make a motion for the adoption of resolution thirteen twenty twenty-five with the attached exhibit one proposal. I'll make a motion for the adoption of resolution thirteen, twenty, twenty-five with the attached exhibit one proposal.
Have a motion?
Second.
Two seconds. Uh, Crystal, we'll give that one to you.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-twenty-five, yes.
Twenty-twenty-five.
So, we have a motion, second by Crystal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. That wraps it up. Thank you, Austin, thank you, Amanda, for showing up, appreciate it.
And you're in this here, and that's the councilor, uh, Miss Allen. And, uh, I do hope that we can have a extremely productive relationship and, uh, like I said, this isn't in any way a disrespect to the city and, uh, the quorum court meeting will be on next Monday, the twentieth. You're all welcome to show up and show your support for this particular agreement.
Give us the forty-eight percent. Don't even offer two more options, what are you thinking?
When I get asked what the numbers are, I normally...
I, I, I do completely concur with that, Austin, I do appreciate, and I appreciate you letting me yell at you, uh, today. And I appreciate you yelling back. It's a good, it's good that we can debate and still be friends afterwards.
You still owe me lunch.
That's not happening until I get my forty-eight percent. So...
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, and Amanda, really, thank you too, I appreciate it. I know you was thrown into the mix and I appreciate you showing up, it means a lot, so thank you for doing that. All right, well, okay, well, I'm done with our stuff.
Hold on, we gotta go back.
No, we gotta go back to the city department report. Economic Development Director, do you have anything?
Hold on, we're still on the vehicle. We gotta finish, before we get too far.
So, the vehicle.
Hey, so, so, so I asked a question, but that's minus what's in the CD, what's not obligated? What do we have left unobligated?
So, uh, what I'm asking for is twenty thousand, and we don't care if it's a Nissan Pathfinder or Toyota, uh, but we gotta get something that's...
But we're already got the other one.
We, we, we've already got it. But, but here's the thing, we found a Toyota, we found a Nissan, the Nissan seems to be the better deal because it's got a better warranty on it for twenty thousand bucks.
Well, I make the motion that we allow you to throw vehicles up to the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Thank you. Now, I've got a question for you, Kevin, back to business today. I got the invoice from them for the, for your Toyota that we got with the grant money. So, are you good with that?
From what you discussed with us, the ability to save money and then outfit better with the same vehicle?
Okay. All right, so the car, um...
You have a motion made and seconded.
Got a motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Uh, and we did table... We did table the financing, correct? So, here's my question, of that committee, let's, let's form a committee right now before we move on past this. I'll take a volunteer at this point in time. I don't necessarily want to head it up because I have too many opinions about it. So, of you council members...
I would nominate Steve Ford to do it.
All right. So, so Steve's been thrown to the wolves. Uh, who's gonna serve? I'd say a committee of two or three.
I'd like to help, I'm, I have a lot of...
Okay, so you want to serve and you want to serve. Everybody on this side serving.
I want to be on it.
Okay.
I've got, I've got interest.
Oh, okay, all right, good, good, that, that's great.
I'm the other side of the wall.
Oh, absolutely, completely understand. Uh, now, just so you know, because you do have that interest, whenever we take a, you may have to recuse, but, but absolutely, your input is valuable. So, so we've got Steve, Bettina, Crystal, Brad. Yeah, okay, all right.
And we'll have this done before next month.
We, we have to have it done before next month because here's the deal...
And I think you need to put either Jennifer or Brandon, maybe both of them on there.
Brandy, you're more welcome. Jennifer, I, I don't care whoever, whoever wants to come to, if y'all want to volunteer to come, that's fine. Uh, you're, but we're gonna have to make a phone call because, you know, he thought that we was gonna make a decision today. Um, so he's gonna have to give us a month. Uh, that's another question, because contractually, real estate-wise, do we want to enter into a real estate agreement contingent on financing? Or contingent on what this committee decides?
Wouldn't they want a payment of some sort, earnest money?
I have no idea.
I don't think there's enough faith on my part to give that.
Same, same.
All right, well, do you want me to try without the earnest money? Okay.
Cause I'm not even, I mean, I may go back all the way to just worrying about the training facility and not...
That'd be fine.
Until we get it.
So, I just, I needed to bring it all up in one fell swoop. So, all right. Okay, so got that done. Uh, we have the motion that carried for the car, I don't think anything else. Uh, Economic Development Director?
Uh, nothing yet to add, except infrastructure has the first committee meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Planning Director?
Business as usual, we did have a fall cleanup. Um, I was very happy to see the amount of piss that we had show up from the high school. Um, with that fall cleanup, it sparked some conversations and hats off to our chairman of board. It was a great new idea for this program. It's very positive and proactive approach, being able to recognize, um, the residents and some businesses on what they're willing to beautify our city and improving it one at a time. We have picked our first recipient and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to put that on social media and maybe twist Mark's arm to put it in the newspaper for us. Um, we've got some banners made up and this is just a, like I said, a proactive program, um, to help shed a positive light on some things that our citizens are doing to help the city.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer, and I really like this idea, by the way, I think it's good.
Thanks for the banners.
Yeah, absolutely. Building Inspector's report was included, Co-Enforcement Officer's report was included. I think he worked on ten cases this last month. Uh, Animal Control Officer, obviously, we've kind of went through that. And we'll probably end up, Carmen, taking that out, uh, just for safety sake and putting it along with the Police Department report.
He did submit a report.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyways...
It's the same report that you submitted to your friends.
Yeah, friends of pet, yeah, friends of pet. Hey, speaking of...
We'll talk about that this week.
Okay, uh, so we're, we're, we're trying to formulate a 501(c)(3), uh, to help us out with the animal control stuff so we can start taking donations, but more so. Uh, we're, we need to talk about the umbrella. They brought up a really good idea, uh, Friends of the Basham Building, and it could be a, a potential, uh, way for us to raise money from the citizens here in Madison County to help us out with the Basham Building too, so, so, yeah, we'll talk about that, all right. Uh, Commission, uh, Committee Reports emailed with the agenda packet. The Airport Commission meeting was September the fourth, Wage Position, September the tenth, Economic Development Commission, September sixteenth, Water and Sewer Commission, September the eighteenth, Planning Commission, September the eighteenth. Personnel Policy, uh, Committee was October the first, and the Park Commission was October the ninth. Uh, I will tell you, uh, we have finalized, uh, and I think I told you all in the last, uh, last deal, uh, like, our last meeting, uh, we have finalized, uh, the benefits package and, uh, once, once we get those codified, once Jessica gets done, uh, with the legality of it, we're gonna present those. Um, we're going to present those, uh, to you all, just in packet form, so you can see how we've enhanced our, uh, personnel policy, uh, with benefits. So, that's good. Uh, unfinished business, we have none. Uh, new, uh, new business, Resolution twelve, twenty-five, certifying tax rate, uh, for the county.
That's the same as always, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's required, but...
Make a motion for the adoption of Resolution twelve dash twenty, twenty-five, second.
Make a motion, have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Uh, Resolution thirteen, twenty, twenty-five regarding approval for the inner aid, well, we've already done that. Uh, Resolution accepting this, uh, certain real estate and approval of donation agreements of real property. This is on the Thompson family and their donation, um, for...
Yes, so this is on the real estate, we had to do a, a denon on it.
Yes.
They switched the LLCs, um, so it's actually coming from a different LLC than what was in the original agreement that got approved. They already dominated the lease.
Yeah, they already dominated the lease.
Make a motion to accept Resolution fourteen, two thousand, twenty-five.
With the, with the amendment?
With the amendment.
Yeah, okay. Uh, got, have a motion, have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, moving right along. Uh, Resolution fifteen, twenty, twenty-five regarding the acceptance of certain donations. This is again, the Thompson family donating the equipment, uh, lease or rental.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution fifteen, twenty, twenty-five.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We've already hashed out the city car. Uh, schedule a Budget Committee meeting, we said Tuesday, right?
Can do the old Budget Committee there.
We've got Leslie, we've got Guy, uh, we've got Crystal.
I'll be out of town.
You'll be out.
I'm on it, but I'll be out of town.
You're on it, yeah, out of town. All right, well, we need your alternate, so Steve will have to come. Uh, who else we got? Scott, you're on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so Tuesday, can you do any games or anything?
I don't believe so.
Check that, Trapper Keeper. Let's see what you got.
What time?
We're gonna see here, what time's better for you?
I can do, you tell me what to do.
Oh, yeah, I'm for it, so don't mind.
Anytime's good for me.
Be an employed sleep.
Wild brag.
The employed person here needs to do it after five o'clock.
Okay, all right, so how about, how about we do it at, uh, take you about fifteen minutes to get over here?
Yeah, five fifteen to work. Five fifteen to work.
Five fifteen to work.
Be waiting at the door.
Five oh five.
Five fifteen, write it down, Tuesday. Brandy? I'll forget, so...
Tuesday, please.
So, will you email me? Thank you. Thank you. All right.
So, not tomorrow night, right? A week from today?
You got your meeting tomorrow night, girl. I mean, we got a lot of, we meet more than any one city I've ever known in my entire life.
Oh, we gotta meet tomorrow?
Tomorrow night is the strategic planning, but I'll send out a reminder tonight, as soon as I get done with it. I feel like you are, but I, I don't remember. Don't ask me hard questions.
I, I know you are, Bettina.
I'm out.
What do you mean?
It's my birthday, I have plans.
What difference does that make? Today's Columbus Day and we still have a city council meeting. What kind of deal is that?
I didn't think the banks were open to that.
Hey, listen, if you'll come, if you'll come, I make Crystal go get you a cupcake and we'll put a candle in it.
Yeah. You might as well bring mine, hopefully.
Uh, announcements, correspondence, oh, I want to add, thank you, Brandy, for including in your report, I'm assuming you included that, uh, the data on the car show. The car show was a huge success. We, we want to applaud Jason and his family and all the people that come out and do that. It was an absolute huge success and, and man, it's good. Um, one last thing that I'm gonna bring up because he's been waiting patiently back there. Terry Presley, uh, sent me a text, and this is kind of out of sorts, but, uh, Terry Presley's sent me a text and regarding, um, he's got somebody coming in toward, I think, the end of next month, this month, toward the end of the, end of the month, uh, to do, uh, a lot of the paving. Well, he's asked us, uh, and I, and I've already explained to him that, I think it was about thirty-eight thousand and some change, somewhere around in there, to pave from twenty-three over the bridge and kind of uphill, right? Um, there's, there's things that we need to talk about with this. I told him that I would look at the budget and see kind of where we're at because we have expensed a lot of stuff this year that was unplanned, like with the flooding and things of that nature. However, put that on your radar and it needs to be something that we all need to collectively, and listen, I can visit with you all individually if you would like for me to, to kind of get, uh, feedback from you all. Um, the thing, the, the benefit is, to the city, is this. Um, it, it helps perpetuate a shutting down, not shutting down, I don't want you, let me clear that up. Not shutting it down, but changing the direction of Missouri Street and Missouri Place over there. Uh, we have a lot of blind corners, a lot of hills and things of that nature. What this through street would eventually do is keep the traffic off twenty-three, that's the benefit to us. Now, in full transparency, Terry Presley will tell you. Terry Presley's making money on these houses. Uh, we've asked him to, uh, to foot the bill on the infrastructure. Uh, he's been doing that, he's been cooperating with us. Uh, we made concession on the bridge that we expected and what he wanted to build, and we found a way to make it work. So, that's all I'm asking everybody to do is keep an open mind. The other thing I'll say is, is we've given, uh, him some variances on sidewalks and things of that nature down the road, which will make it a little more advantageous and a little more cost-effective for him to put that in. So, keep that in mind in full disclosure too. Uh, but I want to visit with you all over the next week, uh, and, and let me run some budget numbers to kind of see where we're at as far as our street department because we have blown through a lot of money this year, uh, on, on some of the project. But if there's something, and, and listen, I'll, I'll entertain or listen to anybody and, and whatever they want to come up with. Um, it's, it's, the, the largest benefit that I see for us trying to help with it, uh, in some form or fashion, is it, it gives us the ability to, uh, reroute another street and make it a little safer for the citizens, uh, to open that through street. Now, with that said, again, all opinions are welcome. Uh, I want to have a, a frank conversation about this, and like I said, individually, over the next week, I'll probably either come to your office. Uh, Steve, I think he's called Steve, uh, as well, Steve and I had a conversation about it today. Um, and, uh, so I, I had one conversation with Steve, I'll probably continue having another conversation with Steve, but each of you all, I will reach out to you all individually and kind of see where we're at. Let me look at the budget and see what we can do as far as this year goes. Again, I didn't promise Terry anything, he knows that. Uh, we, I, I feel like, uh, we've got a good working relationship with him, uh, in the fact that, uh, he has, he's saved a lot of money, uh, here doing buil- building permits and things of that nature. He is for profit, uh, we typically don't do things like this. However, it being a through street, there's a significant light there that we can look at and, and certainly make tangible. Uh, he's asked us to look at it as a citizen that is building infrastructure and houses in our community. As mayor, it is my job to bring it before you all and us have a conversation about it. So, Terry, thank you for waiting till the very end, I apologize that it was that long coming, but I about forgot about you in the dynamic of everything else that was going on here, so...
That only helps the position for the emergency response vehicles, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because we all know, we all know the chaos coming down...
Well, Missouri and Missouri Place, either one is...
Any of you who've traveled Missouri, and if you're traveling within any one vehicle, it is an issue. And then if we have, if we have anything in that section of there, the potential for us having to block part of that road to hydrate, that would, this will help the residents there as much as helping the city.
The, the other thing I'll add, add to what, that's a really good point, I'm glad you brought that up. I wasn't even thinking about that aspect of it, really. Um, the, the, the thing to me is, is it being a through street opens up a dynamic. I will say this, Terry, uh, and this is just who I am and you already know this, I mean, you've had some arguments about this before. It's gonna be hard to do it this year, uh, just for budget. However, uh, as we talk, I, I expect our city council to come up with some ideas to maybe figure out a way to make it work, that we can get it open sooner than later, obviously, for you. So, we'll work on that, and I give you my word that we'll work on that. Again, not promising anything, but we'll have this conversation. And this is the best way to have these conversations, is in, in the open public. Uh, you know, especially whenever we're using taxpayer dollars, uh, to, uh, eventually get you another section of road that goes up to your houses or, or what it would look like. Uh, the key is, it's a through street now, and it, it actually, uh, benefits all those on, on the north end of College Street from College Park on over to have a quicker access to emergency, uh, vehicles and things of that nature up through there. And we understand that, we understand the gravity of it. But just be thinking about it, guys, and, and this is something that, uh, he's, he's put on, on, on my plate, and actually visited with Steve about a little bit too. So, the, you other seven, be thinking about it and I'll reach out to y'all individually and we'll have a conversation about it, so... If nothing else is to come before us...
Motion so moved.
All righty. Got a motion, got a second? What's the old saying?
Ah.